Recording in progress.
Mariah, okay. Is she joining us later? All right, everyone. Good evening and welcome to the March 13th, 2025, meeting of the Brookline School Committee. We have eight of us around the table tonight, and our ninth member, Mariah Obrega, is currently remote. I don't know whether she'll be joining us in the room later. All right, we have just one big agenda item tonight, and that's continued discussion of the fiscal year 2026 budget development. Before we get started, I just wanted to outline which topics we expect to be coming up during which meetings. We have three remaining meetings during March: this one, next Thursday, and Thursday, the 27th. So tonight, we expect to be discussing food services, Office of Student Services workloads, the Office of Educational Equity, and math specialists and K-8 curriculum coordinators. On March 20th, we expect to be discussing BASE, Brookline High School custodial services, transportation excluding special education transportation buildings, and IT, and I take that to include computer software online services. And finally, on March 27th, we expect to be discussing Office of Student Services settlements, transportation, and tuition, the Adaptive Learning Center at Lincoln, and BEEP. So I don't expect us to be taking a vote at any of these meetings to send a completed voting. Depending on what motions get made and seconded, we might be voting to accept or reject individual proposals for reductions. All right. So to begin with, let's go to our public comment. So following our usual procedure, we have 28 people signed up. Actually, two have dropped out, so 26 now. So the first 10 who signed up will speak at the beginning of the meeting until about 6:30, and then the rest will speak at the end of the meeting after we've finished our scheduled business. We expect that to be about 8:30. So, okay, let's start with our public speakers. I'll just remind everyone that, you know, we love to hear from you. We listen attentively. Oh, here's Mariah, so we know how all nine of us in the room. We listen attentively to everybody. We read all the emails that we get, but we do not respond in the moment to public comment that we get during our meetings. All right? Okay, our first speaker of the night is Eric Hansen, and the floor is yours for three minutes.
Good evening, Brookline School Committee members. My name is Eric Hansen, and I'm here tonight as a K through 12 Brookline Public Schools alumnus, a lifetime resident, and a passionate advocate for our children's future. My story is uniquely Brookline. As an IEP student navigating our school system, I experienced firsthand the challenges and triumphs that shape our students. While some may expected me to follow a more limited path, I received my BS in Communications and my EdM in Elementary Education. I then channel my Brookline education into building a successful company that currently enriches children's lives across six Massachusetts communities. And it all began a decade ago in Brookline when I first became deeply invested in Brookline's after-school and vacation programs. Tonight, I'm thrilled to propose a partnership that will ensure the thriving future of Brookline Community Ed and perhaps even Star Academy and Project Discovery. I'm offering a seamless transfer of ownership to my company that will maintain the quality and integrity of the children's programs that thousands of Brookline families rely on each year. We would recruit Brookline teachers who were laid off and all current summer school teachers in Paris. We would also provide jobs for Brookline High School students, which would enhance their experience and resumes, a gift to Brookline driven by my unwavering commitment to our community and the transformative power of these programs. This is a heartfelt investment, not a profit-driven venture. I want to ensure that programs like video production and graph design classes that ignited my own passions continue to inspire future generations. I vividly remember teaching video production at the Pierce School in 2014. Years later, at Boston University, a former student told me that my class was the spark that led her to pursue film, culminating in her winning the prestigious BU Redstone Film Festival. That's the kind of impact we're talking about. This partnership would deliver some immediate and lasting financial relief to the school district. By transferring ownership, the district would be eliminating all future expenses associated with these programs. I understand BASE is working on its own proposal, and my proposal is not meant to compete with theirs. It is an alternative to the closure of these programs. My programs provide the same relief to the district that closure would, but without the closure. I hand-delivered and emailed my proposal to each of you last week with the full details. Brookline residents who are interested in learning more about my company can visit sgedu.net. This is about preserving the opportunities that shape me and my former students, providing some financial relief to the district approximately half a million, and ensuring Brookline remains a beacon of educational excellence. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson. Our second speaker is Jim Durkin.
Good evening. My name is Jim Durkin. I'm here on behalf of the more than 100 Asmi School Custodians and cafeteria workers who are under the threat of privatization. And I'm here tonight to respectfully pose a series of questions for you to consider as you continue to deliberate this issue and other budget matters in the coming weeks. But before I get to my first question, I want to dispel a myth that you will undoubtedly hear from management should a formal privatization proposal come before you, and that myth is the workers will be fine. You're going to hear things like, "Don't worry about them. We're going to make sure they're all offered jobs with the contractor." Indeed, these workers will not be fine. They're going to be cast into economic chaos and, under the best-case scenario, get an offer to do the same job for a lot less money and lousy benefits, if any benefits at all. With that in mind, please ask yourself the following question: Would you ever consider going to the superintendent, his finance director, and the rest of the administration, which has grown by 43% in just four years, and say to them, "You're all doing a great job, and we want you to stay working for us, but times are tough, so we need you to take a 30% cut in your six-figure salaries and give up your health insurance coverage and your eligibility for a decent pension"? I don't know if you'd consider that, but I'm confident in what their answer would be: A resounding no. But make no mistake about it, in the very near future, that is exactly what they will be asking all of you to do to the people in this room, the people who take care of your schools and make sure your kids are served good nutritious meals. And they'll ask you to do this without even offering to make a token sacrifice themselves. In fact, they want to go in the opposite direction and keep growing. Just two weeks ago, they reposted yet another deputy superintendent job with a salary of $190,000 a year. I also have two specific questions for the administration as they continue to crunch numbers. When you lay off all these workers, what's the cost of meeting your contractual obligation to pay them for unused paid leave time, and will that cost be reflected in what you present to the committee? And when all these workers refuse the lousy job offers they get from the private contractor, have you estimated the cost of unemployment benefits this town will have to pay to reimburse the state? For those who may not be aware, Brookline uses the reimbursement option, meaning they don't pay a UI tax like businesses, but they are responsible for reimbursing the state for every penny these workers will collect. That's 50% of their pay for as long as six months. Finally, I'll close with two questions for the committee and the parents to consider. Setting aside for a moment that you will not get nearly the same quality of service for a for-profit company and may not even save any money, are you comfortable with the idea of replacing these trusted, long-serving workers with a revolving pool of strangers? In these times, when we're all understandably vigilant about keeping our schools safe, do you think it's a good idea to literally give the keys to our schools to strangers? I left you all with a packet of news articles that shows how things can go wrong with privatization. They detail the disaster in Shemsford where, over just a few years, four employees of the contractor were arrested for offenses ranging from drug crimes to theft of school laptops, cash, and even students' prescription drugs from a locked cabinet in the nurse's office. This is just one example of how things can go bad very quickly when you get rid of trusted employees for the possibility of some short-term savings. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Durkin. Our next speaker is Laura Miller.
Hi, my name is Laura Miller, and I am a teacher at the Lawrence School. I'm writing because, as you know, the OEE Department and the positions of Claire Galway-Jones and Christina Hernandez are on the list of possible reductions due to the budget deficit. And I want to take a moment to express my profound gratitude for the essential role this department and these fantastic leaders play in both our schools and our district as a whole. Kristi has been working tirelessly with teachers and leadership in many K-8 schools throughout the district to help our teachers grow in our profession and make more strides in helping all of our students and educators, as well as continuing to build relationships with families. She meets monthly with both administration and teachers to further our learning and is by far the most visible central administrator in the district. Claire, as well, is essential for our work as a district as she works behind the scenes to enact initiative purportedly important to the town of Brookline. In fact, the OEE Department is central to the whole district's mission and our schools' improvement initiatives that principals have been writing and working on the last few years. The town of Brookline came up with a core values and strategic plan that was voted on in February of 2024. Included in this plan were the values of celebration of difference and commitment to equity. If we get rid of the OEE, we are directly going against both of these core values. Additionally, since the school committee just voted to get rid of a position that would specifically look at and analyze data, we are at increased risk of not keeping track of this work. Keeping this department just became even more crucial. Progress can be slow, but I have felt a direct effect on my teaching practice from the leadership of this department, and taking away that support would be against everything Brookline claims to value as a school district and a town. Personally, this is my 14th year teaching and not my first year on my anti-racist journey. Every year that I've worked with the OEE Department and in the last two years with Kristi and Claire, I have learned new things and grown in my understanding of the importance of equity and inclusion. The lessons they have taught me have been invaluable in my own ability to teach and grow all my students in the classroom regardless of their background. Additionally, with the anti-DEI initiative that the current Trump administration is pushing throughout this country, we would be capitulating to his administration by cutting this office and these positions from our district. Timothy Snyder, a leading expert on the history of authoritarianism, says in his book, 20 Lessons for Fighting Tyranny, that the first step to resist authoritative rule is to not obey in advance. If we cut this department, we are obeying in advance. In fact, the fact that cutting this department and the important work they do is being considered or was even put up on the position, oh, sorry, the possible lift of cuts to begin with, shows that the district is not really committed to making change and making Brookline a welcoming environment for all students. The district of Brookline already has a poor reputation in regards to hiring and retaining educators of color, and this is an example that feeds that narrative rather than putting the money in the budget, which is an expression of our values. If we were truly committed to equity and inclusion, hold on, please, we wouldn't even dream of cutting the two people in the whole district who are coordinating and leading the work on making Brookline a better place for our students, colleagues, and families of all historically marginalized identities. I have a version of this letter that I will share with the committee that is currently signed by over 110 teachers and staff of Brookline Public Schools, showing that keeping this department also has strong support from staff of this district. Thank you for considering the importance of retaining this department in position, and I apologize for my children disrupting my...
Thank you very much, Ms. Miller. Our next speaker is Michael Rubenstein.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak. My name is Michael Rubenstein, and I am a town meeting member from Precinct 13, as well as a candidate for select board. Today, I am speaking as a resident of Brookline concerned about our schools. I come from a union household. My wife is a member of the American Federation of Musicians, Local 9-535, and we both appreciate the protections and the services that the union provides its members. Last week, you heard during the public comment how much our community values the hard work, expertise, and their relationships with the custodians and the food service employees in our schools. We can't just speak in platitudes about supporting these workers. We have to find a solution that keeps their jobs. I propose a solution that is not only fiscally responsible but also rooted in fairness. Currently, Brookline covers 83% of employee healthcare premiums. I suggest a temporary, one-year reduction in this percentage for fiscal year 26 only, a reduction that would also apply to all non-union personnel up to the superintendent. This shared sacrifice would minimize the impact on take-home pay, especially crucial given the high cost of living in Massachusetts. I believe there is a small number, less than 3%, that would provide the savings necessary to save the jobs of our custodians and our food service workers. This is not a permanent cut but a bridge to a sustainable solution. Next year, when I expect there will be an override before voters, we must work together to eliminate this reduction and ensure fair compensation for all. I acknowledge the difficulty in asking our lowest-paid employees to bear this burden, even temporarily. However, the alternative, contracting out their jobs, is far worse for everyone. I urge you to redirect your efforts from negotiating outsourcing contracts to finding the smallest possible adjustment to healthcare premiums that would save these jobs. Collaborate with union leadership, and let's show our custodians and food service workers that they are valued members of our community. Our schools depend on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rubenstein. Our next speaker is Jen Malone.
Good evening. To the members of the school committee, and my name is Jennifer Malone, and I'm a licensed clinical social worker who has served as a middle school guidance counselor for the public schools of Brookline for the last 19 years. As a mental health practitioner and educator with 30 years' experience advocating for equity and inclusion in public schools, I'd like to speak to you tonight about the importance and the excellent work that is being done in Brookline by the Office of Educational Equity. The mandate for this office is obvious. All students, regardless of race, ethnicity, gender, socioeconomic status, or other identities, must have access to fair and supportive educational environments. This is a human right, a civil right, and a priority in a community like Brookline that is proud and lucky to be home to a diverse student body. 50% of our students identify as Hispanic, African-American, Asian, or as part of other non-white groups. 41% of our student body is considered high need, and 15% is economically disenfranchised. 19% of our students qualify for special education services, and 11% are English-language learners. OEE exists because our data shows significant differences in the academic achievement and belonging outcomes for these students, as well as those who identify as LGBTQIA. OEE's purpose is to analyze the root causes of these discrepancies and then address them by providing sustained, consistent professional development, training, and support to teachers, paraprofessionals, and administrators. OEE works in collaboration with OTL and OSS to ensure every single child has access to an excellent education by training staff in best instructional practices and pedagogy. I have witnessed and benefited personally from this work firsthand at the Florida Ruffin-Ridley School, where Christina Hernandez, Assistant Director of Educational Equity, has dedicated her time and talent for the past two years. By attending weekly team meetings, observing students in classrooms, and running restorative circles, Kristi has become an integral part of our prevention and intervention efforts when it comes to issues of diversity, equity, and inclusion. She has slowly and carefully built relationships of trust and collaboration with every member of our middle school team, educators and administrators alike, so that we can safely and constructively look at data and teaching practices with an eye to creating classrooms and curriculum that elevate the experiences and the backgrounds of all learners. Her capacity, skill, and tenacity created the conditions to engage in conversations and relationships that dig deeply into the systemic issues of racism, poverty, and the inequitable resource distribution. Once the groundwork was set, we were able to confront some painful realities in our school: staff of color not feeling safe and supported in our building, and SEL surveys demonstrating a lack of student belonging resulting in lagging test scores, poor attendance, depression, and anxiety. With Kristi's leadership, we have enhanced our culturally responsive teaching methods, more fully reflecting and respecting students' diverse backgrounds. With Kristi's example and accessible curricula, we have addressed bias and discrimination in ourselves, our colleagues, and our students, ensuring a more safe and welcoming environment for all. With Kristi's encouragement, teachers have become more confident in their ability to run restorative justice circles, and at staff request, she co-facilitated circles for the entire sixth and seventh grade communities.
Sorry to interrupt. If you could please wrap it up.
Yes. She has earned the trust of students and staff by being visible on a daily and a weekly basis, and has helped us move forward from places of despair and negativity to spaces of hope and empowerment. Whether it has been bringing Arab, Muslim, and Jewish students together in dialogue or allowing for ongoing racial reckoning after the murder of George Floyd, she has provided spaces for AAPI students to share their stories and struggles. Earlier this year, in the same public forum, one of...
I'm sorry, could you please wrap it up?
Yes.
There was a three-minute limit.
Oh, thank you. Thank you for your time tonight, and I hope that you will do the right thing in continuing to support the Office of Educational Equity.
Thank you very much, Ms. Malone. Our next speaker is Ed Wong.
It's actually Wang, like the Wang Sander.
Ed Wang.
Or the Wang Computer. Ed Wang, good evening, everyone. Chair of the Former Human Relations and Youth Resources Commission, I think some of you still remember. I'm against student-facing cuts of custodial, food services, and other educational services. That's going to be decided sometime during this whole process. It is easier to physically demolish an antiquated peer school with a wrecking ball; to build a new one that is far conducive to learning. That makes a lot of sense. But reducing staff and services, a wrecking ball techniques, it's not going to work. As a homeowner, when our school asks for support, I continue to do that to support what we need in this town after my children graduated from BHS 20-plus years ago. And I'm still going to support what we do best because Brookline education works. Let's not get too shortsighted or too reactive to what is happening for next-year deficit. I appreciate the hard work of the school committee in upholding your fiscal and advocacy responsibility. It is not, you guys are not using a wrecking ball approach. It is far more than just numbers on a spreadsheet. Many of you said in previous meetings that you do not have enough information to make good decisions. I heard that. I think a lot of others that participated heard that. And also, some said, "At the end of the day, the proposed cut of $8 million is unrealistic, unable to meet that deficit for next year." The Town-School Partnership Review will provide some very critical information to support more informed decisions. I know about the timelines: the town meeting starting on the 27th of May, and so forth and so forth. But this is a very unusual critical juncture of decision point. I hope that the school committee, as well as the town, will request preliminary findings so that we all are more informed when completing the final budget. That minimizes the long-term impact of our school. Brookline education works. So, bottom line, I'm against in terms of the reduction of staff, student-facing staff, custodial, food services, and additional educational services. Custodians and...
I'm sorry.
...worker are much more...
If you could please wrap it up soon.
Very quickly.
Thank you.
...than cleaning up the school or putting meals together for our students. When our kids lost their teeth retainers during their meals, who did the dumpster diving to retrieve them? The custodial did. A Brookline school custodian used his off hour to coach elementary school students for our rec team. Those he coached in the elementary school continue their trusting relationship with him in high school. I can share many more stories of these trusting and durable relationships that are critical to our children during their formative years of development. I, too, was an immigrant...
If you could please wrap it up, Mr. Wang. Mr. Wang, you've gone way over, and we appreciate the comments, but you...
Can I have one more minute?
No, not one more minute. Please wrap it up in the next few seconds.
All right. Okay, I just want to say this because I heard from previous speaker, and I'm respectful of the other speakers, too. You know, my MO has always been leaving possible solution to disagreement. What we don't need is a wrecking ball, but a strategic laser focus on how do we deal with the next-year budget deficit. So, thank you so much for letting me speak. So, thank you so much for letting me speak. And there are always solutions. Let's work harder what these solutions are for next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wang. Our next speaker is Greg Porter.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Greg Porter, and I am the K-8 Social Studies Curriculum Coordinator. I've been in Brookline for my entire 20-year career, including roles as a building vice-principal, middle school social studies teacher, grade-five teacher, and grade-three student teacher. And I'm here to advocate tonight for the K-8 coordinators by outlining the importance of these roles and their direct student-facing impact. The curriculum coordinator role predates my 20 years in Brookline and has been vital to the creation, maintenance, growth, and success of the public schools of Brookline for decades. Curriculum coordinators provide direct and ongoing support to roughly 200 teachers each across eight schools and nine grades, impacting thousands of students and families. And it's important to stress this phrase, "direct and ongoing." We are the direct contact for each of those teachers as it pertains to our respective content areas. In the area of curriculum, coordinators outline the scope and sequence of units and lessons, identify and provide instructional materials such as slides, handouts, assessments, projects, labs, manipulatives, books, and readings. We lead curriculum development and enhancement projects, organize order and maintain materials for all eight schools, work with teachers to differentiate curriculum to make it more accessible for all students, specifically those who receive special education and/or ELE services. And all of this work is to ensure a consistent, cohesive, and equitable curriculum across all schools. Every one of these items is student-facing, impacting students' educational experience every day. Coordinators also support instructional pedagogy by being up-to-date on best practices within our discipline and ensuring that our teachers receive training and support in building their capacity. We have specialized knowledge and provide instructional support to teachers as coaches and mentors by engaging educators in individual, grade-level, and department meetings, and by providing quality professional development opportunities for teachers. Coordinators strategically utilize district funds to maintain and support current programming while simultaneously driving improvement. We write grants to tap into additional funding to the tune of hundreds of thousands of dollars, and we are often tasked to identify painful budget cuts to department materials and trainings to help stave off teacher layoffs. In this most recent budget crisis, the K-8 coordinators have offered up hundreds of thousands of dollars of materials cuts, the equivalent of at least four full FTEs in support of this crisis. But our roles are critical to working successfully with the now dramatically reduced materials budgets. Coordinators work with teachers and building administrators to collect, analyze, disseminate, and utilize assessment data to track student progress, support each student, and inform educator instructional practices. And lastly, coordinators are present in schools and classrooms on a daily basis, meeting with students and teachers and families and administrators, and special education and EL teachers. It's my favorite place to be, is the classroom. In conclusion, I ask you to consider the following: what is the true value of the K-8 coordinator role and all of the programming worth in comparison to a one-time savings of $400,000? And remember that these roles and their accompanying programming would not be a one-time loss. It would be an annual one that would contribute to the deterioration of the quality of education in the public schools of Brookline for years to come. And even a potential restoration of these positions in the future will carry the loss of decades of educational and historical knowledge of Brookline schools. For all of these reasons, I ask you to please remove the K-8 curriculum coordinators from the budget cuts list. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Porter. Our next speaker is Donna Odell.
My name is Donna Odell, and I'm the kitchen manager at the peer school. I'm speaking to you tonight on behalf of the Food Service Department to express our strong belief that the current team should remain in place and the district should not move forward with privatizing. Our dedicated and hard-working staff have proven time and time again that we are an essential part of the school community, and it is critical that we continue our work as we know our students, their preferences, health needs, and the daily routines that help them succeed. In the past, a management company was used to oversee the food service operations, and it was not well-received by either the students or families. Our current food service team has built relationships with students, staff, and families, making us irreplaceable. We take pride in being one of the first faces that our students see in the morning. We go above and beyond to make sure that every meal is nourishing and meets the specific needs of our diverse student population. We ensure that no child goes hungry or without a meal that fits their needs. Our staff often comes to work early, stays late, and if necessary, will come in during school vacations to ensure that we are fully prepared for our students. We invest our time and resources to decorate our cafeterias for special events because our students enjoy it as much as we do. We have consistently gone above and beyond for our students, especially during the pandemic, working tirelessly, preparing thousands of meals, and delivering them to our students. We are a department that is diverse in every sense. Our team feels strongly that we are often overlooked and underappreciated. We're feeling a lot of unnecessary stress and worry over the thought of losing our jobs. However, we continue to work with heart, dedication, and a deep commitment to every student that we serve. Our students deserve a food service department that is familiar, dedicated, and committed. Privatizing will break the bond that we have worked so hard to establish. Please make the right decision to keep our food service department intact and do not privatize. Our current team is the best decision for our students, the district, and the community. We care deeply about the work we do. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Our next speaker is Judy Atanasov.
Yes.
Yes.
My name is Judy Atanasov, and I'm the district-wide school psychologist for Brookline Public Schools. With 21 years of experience in public education, and this being my ninth year in Brookline, I'm speaking tonight with my deep concern regarding the proposal to eliminate the district-wide school psychologist position. I have also submitted letters with numerous Brookline staff signatures to members of the Select Board and School Committee, and requested that members of the Select Board move the necessary funds to eliminate the need to cut any positions. My position is essential to staff and students across all schools in Brookline. I conduct between 50 and 73 psychological evaluations per year for Brookline students in BEEP, all of K-8 schools, BHS, and students in private-day residential and hospital settings. Last year alone, I completed 20 evaluations specifically for Brookline students placed in private-day and residential settings. These evaluations sometimes additionally include academic evaluations and range anywhere from 18 to 17 hours per student. Some of the students I assess as part of my role are often among the most vulnerable Brookline students and present with the most complex learning profiles that demand not only specialized knowledge but also significant dedication. Many of these students are nonverbal and face severe medical and mental health disabilities, which necessitates a comprehensive and compassionate approach to assessment that goes beyond standard practices. To meet the needs of these students, I have had to adopt new assessment techniques that are not commonly utilized in the public school sector. I also have training and assessments specifically related to autism that not all school psychologists are trained in, and I'm asked to administer these assessments as part of my district-wide position in all buildings in Brookline. In addition to my role, I also consult with providers, all school teams, and providers such as psychiatrists, pediatricians, therapists, and developmental behavior pediatricians to support students' functioning in their school settings. To be clear, the district-wide school position is not an additional position. I work directly with students every day, and my caseload is equivalent to each school psychologist in the district. The position is essential to prevent misidentification and disproportionality, meet the compliance of NASP-recommended ratios, assure all of our evaluations are completed within mandated timelines, to appropriately identify special education students with the use of comprehensive data, assure that our students who receive clinical services continue to be seen by highly-trained staff, and assure the district's resources are used in the most efficient way. Should the district-wide position be cut, building-based psychologists will face an increased workload as they take on the district-wide position caseload, which will necessitate travel to locations such as Providence, Worcester, Acton, resulting in lost times that could otherwise be dedicated to their responsibilities within their schools. The district will have to spend additional funds to pay for contracted services to complete psychological evaluations. These expenses are 1.5 to two times the amount of a salaried school psychologist, and the services these agencies provide are not consistent with the current standards in place. With the proposed cut and the current needs of Brookline students, the district will also experience the cost of lawsuits due to the lack of compliance with providing mandated IEP services and adhering to mandated test timelines. For all these reasons, myself and all of the school psychologists in Brookline insist that you vote to retain the district-wide school psychologist position. It's imperative to maintain the current staffing of school psychologists and all clinician team members, clinical staff team members, so that we can continue to provide the high-quality support our students deserve. Thank you for your attention to this important matter.
Thank you, Ms. Atanasov, and I apologize for mispronouncing your name earlier. So, we've heard from nine speakers so far. Two of our original 10 had to drop out, so I'm going to move down the list and ask whether Maeve Kelly is in the room and would like to speak now instead of at the end of the meeting. Okay, I don't see her, so I'll keep going. Is Daniel Lipton here, and would he like to speak? Nope. Okay, that's not him. All right, next on the list would be Mary Ellen Thorne. Yeah. Yeah, right. I'm sorry about the short notice.
You can hear me. Okay. Good evening, members of the school committee, Dr. Guillory, and fellow attendees of tonight's meeting. My name is Mary Ellen Thorne, and I am a middle school learning center teacher at dress school school. Prior to this, I was a paraprofessional at Lincoln for 20 years. In my time supporting students in Brookline, I have worked with all grades in K to 8 and spent a year working in the adaptive learning center. In my current role, I support students in two grade levels. Each student's educational placement is promised to be in the least restrictive environment. For that to happen, I need to provide various resources in different spaces throughout the day. I can go from teaching math or ELA in a small group setting to providing pull-out services for phonics instruction, to addressing executive functioning skills, or curriculum help in my learning center. Beyond the small group setting, I also push in to provide student support in the general education classrooms such as math and English. The I in IEP stands for individualized. My students, as individuals, have various needs. Where, in the same grade, in the same cohort, with the same teaching team, I can be responsible for addressing their potentially unrelated skills in the same class. To make my student-facing time as meaningful as possible requires consultation with several adults in the building. I meet weekly with the general education teachers for curriculum modifications and accommodations. I consult with our math specialist. I partner with the members of the clinical team, whether it's a school psychologist, the adjustment counselor, our guidance staff, or a combination of all three. Students can receive pull-out services from our occupational therapist and speech and language pathologist, where we meet and to coordinate the generalization of the skills throughout the day. My students may require unique behavioral supports, which requires work with both of my vice principals to understand their presentation in the hallway, in the classroom, and outside at recess, to ensure empathetic and appropriate reactions to unexpected behaviors and reactions. The administrative part of my job can include testing a student for an initial or reevaluation, writing reports on my findings, and attending team meetings. My calendar changes with each new deadline added for filing reports or when a student's support needs change, or a new student is identified and added to my caseload. I communicate with my families to cultivate trusting relationships that assume the best intentions on both sides of this partnership, working together to meet the students' needs and allowing for maximum growth over one, two, or even three years that we may work together. This takes time. It is a proactive step, and I do my best so I can service the needs of my caseload. The proposed reduction of learning center teachers in the Brookline schools will translate to real-life increased caseloads per special educator, which will make completing all the tasks I mentioned really hard or next to impossible. To lose these positions would be a detriment to our most vulnerable students in this population. I am invested in Brookline. I have been here close to 25 years. I just want you to think about our students, and that's all. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much, Ms. Thorne, and that brings us to the end of our first segment of public comment. We'll hear the other speakers after our presentations and discussions have ended for the night. Okay, so to remind everyone, the five topics that we'll be discussing this evening are food services, workloads in the Office of Student Services, the Office of Educational Equity, math specialists, and K-8 curriculum coordinators. Dr. Guillory, would you like to start us off with a summary?
Sure thing. Thank you, and good evening, everyone. Thank you all for being here tonight, as well as those listening. We, did I just close it? So, tonight, we want to, as Dr. Lou shared, walk you through a couple of slides to accompany each of the various areas that we're going to discuss. First up, we're going to give a progress update, and I think the order of operations will be Dr. Givens, then Dr. Schmuckler, then I'll walk through the question around OEE and equity leads, and then Dr. Fortuna, I think, will close us out. So, where we presently stand, our initial budget gap was 8.2 million. We received an increase in revenues from the group health costs that brought our 8.2 down to 8,000,57,584. And the school committee has presently accepted some proposals as such, which have contributed $3 million to the reduction. So, now our revised gap presently sits at $5,011,631. So, with that, I will turn it over to Dr. Givens to walk us through the first part, which we've just heard about, is our food service department.
Can you hear me?
No.
I'm not going to grow any taller, so I'll bring the mic down a little. Can you hear me now? Is that better? Okay. So, one of the strategies that was brought forward for consideration is to move towards a hybrid model in our food service program. The estimated cost savings associated with that was approximately $222,493. This number has been updated slightly because, as you know from our meeting last week, that we received the FY '26 health insurance rates from the town, and so I went through the proposals and I updated them based on the actual costs for next year. So, not a significant variation there, but nonetheless, it's a little bit lower than it was originally as presented. So, you know, we all recognize that students need to be--
Can you hear me?
I don't really know what to do to make it better. Closer? Is this better now? Okay. Yep. Yep, no problem. So as I was saying, providing students with high-quality meals is very important because hungry kids find it very difficult to learn and focus on their educational learning opportunities. And so what we were looking at is, is to maintain the high quality that we provide now and see if there was a way to optimize costs so that we could reduce the benefit costs that offset our educational costs. So, so that was the model that we had presented, but in conversation with the, the director, and with all that's going on in Washington right now with cuts, we would like to propose a revised recommendation. The recommendation would be that we, we retain the current model for the upcoming year while we explore options, and part of our rationale, I'll, I'll speak to in a moment, but that we would take this charge of 222,493, and we would pay for that out of the revolving fund. So the rationale behind, if you could go to the next slide, please. The rationale behind this recommendation is that this program relies heavily on state and federal support to operate. In FY '24, 28% of our receipts came from federal sources, and 68% came from the state. And as we're watching budgets and programming get slashed at the federal level, we realize that this program in particular is very vulnerable since the funding is predominantly generated from municipal government sources. So since we are not clear about what the fallout from further reductions will be to the federal and state aid that's available to us, we feel that we should pause any changes to the program until we can see what funding will be available to us in the coming year. This isn't going to happen in time for us to make any complete overhaul in a redesign or even modifying the service delivery model if we have to completely reimagine what kind of programming we will be able to offer. So since there is, we anticipate that this year we will end the year to the good by a couple of hundred thousand. Both the director and I felt confident that we could absorb this cost in FY '26 without causing any changes to the service or the program for the upcoming year. So, so if you go to the next slide, please. I don't know who's... Okay, great. So, you know, the question is the ability to pay. So as I mentioned, if we went to a hybrid model, again, let me explain, like, the hybrid model isn't outsourcing everything, so I just want to be clear about that. There seems to be misunderstanding that we're going to privatize the entire program. That is not what this proposal was about. It is not our intention to outsource the entire food service program or custodial program. So I just want to lay that to rest. That's, that's not at all what this proposal is about, that a hybrid model means that you have a certain number of in-house employees that continue to be employed, and you outsource a portion of the workforce. So I just want to be clear about that. If we, if we went with a hybrid model, we had estimated the savings of 222,493. Benefits for the, the staff that would remain, the cost of those benefits at this time are So the total cost of benefits for the food service program is the 344,345. The fund balance, I'm giving you the fund balance for the last several years, and as you can see, the fund balance for the food service program has been declining over the last several years, and we're pleased to report that, you know, we'll, we'll be able to close this year with a positive profit and loss, and that will increase the fund balance in '25, and we estimate between 250 to 300,000. And that is where we would get the funds to support this, this, this reduction without changing the model. So that is our revised proposal before you tonight, and happy to answer any questions you might have regarding the plan.
We do seem to have reached a stopping point for the moment. Would you like to take questions now, or are you continuing?
It's entirely up to you.
Okay, well, let's, let's have questions.
Or if you have questions, I'm happy to answer.
So I saw Helen's hand.
So I have a clarification question. Are you proposing 222,493 or 344,345?
We were proposing the 222,493.
And if we were to do 344,345, which is close to what you're proposing for the increase?
For all of the benefits?
Yes. Would you feel...
Then you would lower the, the fund balance would go down further than...
Right.
Yeah.
But our deficit would go down?
Yes. There's a correlation between the two.
Our, thank you, our gap. I'm sorry.
Wrong word.
Stephen?
I'm confused. Can I, can I ask you to go through a lot of that again?
Absolutely.
Okay. So first, can you explain why the program is vulnerable? Exactly how is it funded now, and how is it vulnerable right now?
So the program is funded, 28% of the revenues come from federal sources, and...
Which federal sources?
From the federal government, from...
But more specifically?
Yeah. So...
Department of Agriculture.
Thank you.
USDA.
USDA, yeah.
Federal school fund.
Yep. And it funnels through the state, but it's the federal government's contribution reimbursements is what we call them, sometimes grants. And then the state is, provides 68% of our funding. So the two together represent the majority of the revenue for the food service program. With federal cuts that will trickle down ultimately to the state, the state is then going to have to grapple...
That have or have not yet been made?
That have, well, we, we saw a cut this, just this week, right? That the cut that was made to the USDA program impacts up us by $34,000. So whatever cuts are made, you know, that, that could impact any of our food service programming will definitely hinder our ability, you know, to be able to continue to provide the same level of services that we are now. $34,000 is something we can, obviously, we can make, we can absorb some of that, but without knowing, you know, kind of the end game at the federal level, it's really hard to, you know, move forward with, you know...
So either way, revenue is going to be a challenge.
Yes.
So can you go back two slides, please?
Two slides.
Two slides? No, back, one more. I'm sorry, can you go forward one slide then? Apologies. So in the food service hybrid model... You're saying return, retain the current service delivery model while exploring options. So does that mean the same staffing profile for FY '26?
Yes.
So then can you go to the next slide, please? So what does it mean to say, I'm sorry, can you go one slide ahead? I apologize. So what does it mean to say benefit savings and benefits for remaining staff? What's the staff profile difference that's being referenced in this slide?
So if we went to a hybrid model, as I said originally, we would, we anticipated we'd realize $222,000 in savings. The hybrid model retains a certain number of staff in-house. Those staff in-house, some of them also receive health insurance benefits.
Wait, but, but I thought we're only exploring in school year '26. We're not changing our model.
We're not. I'm, I'm talking about the original program, so I wanted to walk you through, I didn't want to change the number so you would know where it was coming from.
So this is where I'm, I'm struggling to understand. Maybe somebody else in the school committee understands it already and can help me understand?
What's your question?
I'm trying to understand what savings is being referenced. You, you got it, Helen?
I do.
Then, please, explain to me.
I can explain it, I'm not sure, but we were assuming the 222,493 if we were to privatize. Okay, so that was the number that they were carrying in this sheet. However, the, if we were to add up all the benefits, it would be those two numbers together, meaning 344, all the benefits for all the people in that, in that group, in the, the food service workers.
I was trying, Stephen, to illustrate...
Healthcare costs, retirement costs, whatever costs that our benefits are.
Point is, point is, let me draw my mic. Maybe I can try.
Go ahead.
The 222 is the positions that would have been outsourced. The 121, because it's a hybrid model, are the positions that would have remained. And so she's just showing us that either way, there would have, there was a larger pool of benefits costs. There is only the 222 that we are talking about, whether or not it would have shifted or would have been eliminated.
But for school year '26, we're not proposing changing the staffing profile at all?
Correct, but it's already proposed. Now we get to consider it as a reduction because it's being shifted to the revolving fund. So it, because it shifts to the revolving fund and off of the general fund, it still accrues as a savings for us.
So the savings is just shifting from general to revolving?
Yes.
That's, that's the only way in which we're looking at a potential savings to the budget?
Correct.
Thank you.
Correct, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Helen?
I would like to make a motion, everybody agrees, to take the 344 savings out of the revolving fund. There is, there's 800,000 now. We are assuming more money going into it. It's money that we own in the, the budget. I wouldn't take more, I mean, people are looking at a million there possibly, because in past history, food services has always run with a deficit. Once the state and the feds started paying for food services, we were able to, to have a bit of a surplus, and I think we need to protect that surplus. But I feel comfortable proposing the 344,000, and that people can go home tonight and know that things are...
Well, I'll wait until...
So have, have you made a motion?
Okay.
Well, has anyone going to second Helen's motion to begin with?
And I have a question. For Helen. Sorry.
I did not. I'm asking whether anyone will.
All right.
Second.
Okay. All right, so that's on the floor.
Helen, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Carolyn.
You just said some people are talking about a million.
Well, there's a million. I mean, I didn't say anybody's talking about it. What I was trying to say is people can see that we have a fund balance of a million, and I was trying to explain why I would not take more from that fund balance.
But why would we need to take more?
Because we have enough, I million dollars.
Oh, wait, 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 okay. To be clear, to answer your question, you can't.
Okay.
There's nothing, you can't...
Okay, yep. Understood. I understand. Yep, thank you. And just to confirm, this means no change?
No change. No change, but you, you get the savings that you were relying upon, or that we had proposed.
Can I just make a comment, which is, before drawing on a, on a revolving fund balance, I would want to know, like, what percentage that is of the annual revenue? It seems like the annual revenue for food services is a little over 4 million, so we're talking about a, a balance that's about a quarter of annual revenue here. I mean, that's where it's expected to be sitting, so that's what we're drawing from. And Mariah? And then Stephen?
I appreciate the changes that are being proposed. I'm a little bit concerned about proposing the entire 344,000, Helen, because I think that maybe, I don't remember how many people even remember, but maybe it's just you and I and Suzanne who remember the saga of food services every year...
Oh, yeah.
...in terms of having a fund balance.
Oh, yeah.
And having to find, for anyone who doesn't know, the revolving fund cannot close the year in deficit, and so what was happening in prior years, the, the only reason, as it was mentioned, that we have these balances now is because of the federal and state funding, and in prior years, the fund was ending the year in deficit, and we were having to find, or PSP was having to find funds to close the year at net zero, when it was already under its own financial strain, under its regular general fund, and having to then take funds from the general fund to close the food services deficit was always an end-of-the-year stress. And while I see the million dollars up there, and I think it's great that the director of food services has estimated another 250 to 300,000 going in, I'm pretty concerned about what may happen at the federal and state level of cuts that are even for the current year, to be frank with you, and we've received information through our, I can't remember the name of the advocacy group, but it's the advocacy group that PSP participates in around food, or food funding through the state. I believe there was a $12 million cut to the next state, the next year for the state already for the food services program, and the mayor, or the mayor, the governor has said she will not find other funds. And so again, I'm just very concerned about where we're going in the long run with being able to keep food services solvent over the long term. And so my amendment to your proposal, Helen, would be to almost split the difference and maybe take it as like 300,000, or something like that, which represents the food service directors, you know, the higher end of the profit and loss. Again, I feel like this is a somewhat stressful strategy, but I'm, I understand where we're going with this, and so I would just like, that would be my amendment to your...
And I would find that as a friendly amendment.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
I'd like to offer yet another potentially friendly amendment, perhaps unfriendly, to separate this into two separate votes. One, first, to withdraw the proposed cut entirely of the proposed food service hybrid model as it was presented initially of 222,493, and then separately to consider an alternative mechanism for paying for food services as presented by Susan. So first, to withdraw the proposed cut, and then second, to consider an alternative mechanism for funding food services going forward into SY '26.
Why do we need to withdraw it since there's no motion?
Because we've been considering cuts one by one anyway, and I think it would help to remove this entirely, and then consider separately how we want to consider funding food services, because if I understand this correctly, this is a consideration of a change in mechanism for payment of food services.
I got you, okay.
Also, I think it helps in terms of clarity if I'm a sample of the kind of person who might be struggling to understand what we're, what we're talking about right now.
I appreciate what you're saying in terms of if, if we accept funding benefits at some, at this level or some other level, people might think that we were still going ahead with the hybrid model, so rejecting the hybrid, but then funding separately. Okay.
So who has to accept that amendment? Me or you?
I think you would have to, because you made the motion.
I made the initial motion. Okay, I will accept that. Do we need to...
Actually, I think it's, I think it's up to the, no, I think it's up to the school committee to decide. You don't own the motion now that it's on the floor. Right? The, the committee, the committee does. So we can, we can vote first to make Stephen's amended version the main motion, and then we can vote on the main motion.
So I would move to remove the food service hybrid model as, as presented initially as a 222,493 cut to the SY '26 budget.
I'll second it.
All right, thank you, Helen. Is there any further discussion on that before we vote? And then after that, if, if, if we, well, regardless, we can then go to a discussion of what, what would replace it. Okay, I don't see any hands up, so let's vote. Jesse?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
Mariah?
Yes.
Suzanne?
Yes.
Helen?
Yes.
Val?
Yes.
Carolyn?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. So that one is off the table. So let's talk about... So let's talk about the, the latest proposal for, for funding food services. Any more comments or questions about that?
What's the motion now?
Oh, that's right, I guess we do need a motion now.
Okay, well, then I'll make a new motion to reduce our deficit by 300,000, using money from the fund balance of food services for the food service benefits.
Second.
That's not very good.
All right, is there a second?
I'm sorry, you said 300?
Yes.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I was just trying to assimilate what you had said, Helen. Okay. Stephen? Stephen, you have your hand up?
No, I don't.
Any further comment or questions on that one? All right, let's vote on that. Jesse?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
Mariah?
Yes.
Suzanne?
Yes.
Helen?
Yes.
Val?
Yes.
Carolyn?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. So I guess we'll be doing it that way for one year. And thank you Susan for the revised proposal. Okay, Dr. Gilley, shall we go back to you?
Yes, next up, we have Dr. Schmuckler to talk us through student services, caseloads and workloads, I believe.
Good evening, good evening. You hear me okay?
No.
No. I don't know how to get closer to you.
You have to stack people in high quarters.
Thanks, I'm sorry, I was so slow down.
Is that better? Good evening, okay. I'll give everyone a minute.
You really were struggling there.
I didn't motivate to do it earlier in the day, so.
I don't know. No, no. Test, test. You're good? Okay. Well, good evening. In this, my first role as interim, I would love to be able to be here and talk about the incredible work that our teachers, paraprof- Too loud. I would love to be able to talk about the incredible work that our teachers, paraprofessionals, specialists, so this is our speech, OT, BCPA, APE, PT, our counselors, our social workers, our psychologists, our guidance counselors, do every single day in our schools, in support of our students, in support of families, and in support of the whole school community. Unfortunately, what I'm tasked with today is to talk about the proposed reductions that have been made by OSS leadership. And we're really going to focus today on, as you can see on the screen, the first one in terms of learning-centered teachers. And you heard really eloquently from Mary Ellen Thorne, and I want to thank her for coming and presenting tonight just the diversity and the range of things that a learning-centered teacher does. And so we're going to really try and give you both the data that you've asked for, as well as the context in which learning-centered teachers and special educator teachers at the high school work. And there's a difference, which we'll get into a little bit, in terms of what K8 learning centers do and our 912 special educators do. And so we're going to focus on that. Next slide, please. So one of the things that people have asked about is what's the threshold, right? And this is set by DCE. So you can see there in terms of instructional groupings. For all students who are outside of the general education classroom, less than 60% of the time, in an instructional grouping, so that means in a learning-centered environment, you can have eight students with one teacher, 12 students with a teacher and a para, and 16 students with a teacher and two paraprofessionals. So that's the requirement that we have to meet. We cannot go over that threshold in terms of instructional groupings. Next slide, please. So one of the things, and as you heard again from Mary Ellen, in terms of caseload and workload, right? So we're going to look at a lot of numbers which speak about people's caseloads. And what we've been digging into, and there's still much more work to be done, is really looking in terms of this proposal, is what does that look like in terms of workloads? And you'll see that learning-centered teachers, and our learning centers offer students with mild to moderate disabilities. And so there's a huge range of what learning-centered teachers do. So for example, as you can see in the first, that teacher, there are 11 students, right? And so that's the caseload. But you can have, if you look on the other slide, you can have one student with five hours a week of special education services. And so for that learning-centered teacher, that's five hours of workload. You can have another student that has three hours a day of learning center, and that's 15 hours a week, right? And so that's your difference between caseload and workload. Again, as you heard, workload includes all of your special education service delivery minutes, your consults, your work with teachers, your testing, your meeting with families. So all of that make up workload. And so as we're looking at this proposal and this reduction, we're very carefully matching caseload and workload across the district. We are talking K through 12. You will see, and next slide, please. You will see this modeling is for K8, and as I said, we'll talk about the high school later. But this is the proposed reduction for eight FTEs is a K12 reduction. So what the slide shows, and I'm going to walk you through it, is the number of students in our learning centers across our eight elementary schools. This does not include our specialized programs. So we have a number of schools with district-wide programs. Those students are not in these numbers. This is pure learning center numbers. So you can see the number of students across the district. The next column looks at our current FY25 teacher FTEs. Number of students per teacher, so that's your ratio, right? So that's your caseload. And then you can see the range. And right now, we have a range in our learning centers between six and 17. And as I described, the reason why there is such a wide range is based on level of intensity of the students' needs in every learning center. And you'll see that it's very, it can be very different school by school, because as you heard, IEPs are individualized, and different cohorts of students have different needs in certain schools. And those often change year by year, right? And so our schools and our learning center compositions and our instructional groupings also change year by year based on what are the needs across grades.
Can I just ask one question?
Yeah.
When it says modeling for presentation purposes only, does that mean that these are not real numbers?
No, these are real numbers, but it's, I think, I don't want people to get the impression that we're looking at a K8 and a cut at every K8 school. So we're looking K12, and so when you look at this, we're only talking about our eight elementary schools.
So-
But these are-
Is this not the plan then? Like, this proposes, I don't, tell me if I should stop asking questions because you're going to get there.
Well, I hope I get there, yeah.
Okay, then I'll stop asking questions and I'll ask at the end.
Perfect, perfect. So again, so this is elementary, but we're looking, the eight FTEs were proposed K12, right? I think people, the impression was that it was, and it may have started there, that it was one cut per elementary school. And what we need to look at, as again, you'll see the ranges in our learning, the learning centers in schools are very different. So when we actually dig down into workload, we need to look at school by school in terms of what makes sense in terms of that cut. And you'll see, next slide, please, if you look at the visual, what it looks like in terms of FY25 to FY26. And you can see just on the visual, there's different impacts per school, right? In terms of some schools, this change will be an increase of one student per learning center on average. And in other schools, there's a change of three students per learning center per average, right? And so that's why when I say this is for modeling only, we need to take a look at that. Yep. Helen?
This is just to clarify a question. So you had said if there's a teacher and a paraprofessional, you could have up to 16 students?
One teacher and paraprofessional, 12. Teacher and two paraprofessionals, 16.
Two teachers and a paraprofessional.
Yep. Any questions before we-
And all these classes have paraprofessionals?
Yes, yes. And our paraprofessionals and our teachers, just as you heard, do pullout services, so that's in the learning center, and they push in to classrooms in terms of inclusion support, right? And so it's a very fluid model, and every learning center looks a little bit different because it's based on the needs of the children in that learning center.
So I'm assuming that this modeling is based on minutes and IEPs? And I'm wondering how you accounted for the assessment and the non-testing and things like that?
This modeling is caseload right now. And so I think in terms of the work that needs to be done, we have been looking at workload, and I'm going to talk about, I'm going to show you an actual workload. But in terms of, and I think that's why there's more work to be done on this, is this is caseload. And what's behind the scene is the work that needs to get done on workload, which is what the directors are doing. And I think there's collaborative work to be done with the directors and principals school by school, as we dig deep into this, in terms of making sure that again, we are not making any reductions that are going to impact student service delivery and individualized educational plans. So the next slide, I think there was another question, Suzanne?
Yeah, just a quick clarifying. When you had the FTEs, that included the teacher and the paras?
No.
That was just teacher-
You want to go back a slide?
Back one, I'm sorry.
That is just the learning-centered teacher. So that does not include the paraprofessionals that support that learning-centered teacher.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. So let's look at what workload looks like. Oh, not yet. So this is the high school. And the reason, so first of all, at the high school, high school teachers are called special educators because they do multiple things, right? They work in the learning center, but they also co-teach. So it's a very different model. They co-teach academic classes, they teach strategy classes, and then they also teach small group content lessons. And one of the things that also happens at our middle schools is many of our, there may be cohorts of middle school students who also need their academic content taught by a learning-centered teacher. And that's when you get a learning-centered teacher who might have five students, because those students are getting their academic content, English, math, social studies, and science, or some variation thereof, outside of the general education classroom, right? And so those are all of the variables that we have to take into account, right? What's happening in the learning center? And it is why you see caseloads across the district from six to 17, right? Your teacher with six students is likely to be teaching probably academic content, and again, this is in the middle and upper grades, outside your learning center, whereas your younger grade learning-centered teachers, for the most part, are in and out of the classroom teaching specialized instruction within the learning center. So at the high school, again, that's approximate, there are 23 special educators, and their caseload is 23 to 30. What is in that count however, is if you're co-teaching and you've got a class of 16 students, eight of those students are in special education, that is in that 23 to 30 count. So any questions, just understanding sort of the differentiation between elementary and high school?
I have a question on the VHS part.
Yeah.
And I'm going back one, so go-
Oh, please, okay.
Are you going backwards, so to stay here? Is it reasonable to say then, we've got 23 educators, say times 24, 25 students on their caseload, that's what, up around 450 to 500 students getting? So 25% of the student population is receiving special services?
Yes.
Okay, thanks for clarifying.
Karen, I'm just, if you go back one, I just want, clarifying question.
Yes.
Oh no, go back to, another one. So when you say a range, that means some learning-centered teachers have six children for their entire caseload or work caseload?
Correct, caseload, yes.
And some have 13 for their entire caseload?
Correct, or 17.
Or 17.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
And the teacher who has six, his workload is equivalent to the teacher who has 17's workload potentially, based on the needs of the student that they're serving, right?
I understand that, do we know that's true?
Yes, yes. So one of the things we have been doing, and I'm going to show you a schedule, is as we're looking at caseloads, we're also looking at what does that workload look like in terms of the schedule? So we do know that this is based on fact. We do know that that is true, but we've got much more work to be done.
Carolyn?
Can you go back to the VHS side?
Sure.
So in the teach small group content classes-
Yep.
So are any of these, and apologies if you said this-
No.
Are any of the 23 special educators specifically and exclusively assigned to any of our substantially separate programs, or this is all learning center?
Learning center, small group, co-teaching.
Okay.
So within that realm. Yep.
Thank you.
So again, just like what you saw K8, this is not our specialized programs at the high school. This is just students who would be in, you know, what's learning center or co-taught or small group.
Sorry, just, can I just ask one?
Yeah.
So going back to the K8 model, none of those numbers represent, for example, teachers in RISE, teachers in ALC, these are all just-
Learning center, yeah.
Okay.
Yep. And the students are in learning center. So it also doesn't, there may be students who just are an IEP for speech and language. Those students don't go to learning center, so they're not in these numbers either, right? It's just students who get learning center services. Are we good to? Okay, so, so really looking at a translation from caseload to workload. So this is an actual schedule. The names are fictitious. And I'll give you just a minute to, it's a lot going on there. So this is actually a K2 learning-centered teacher with a caseload of 14, which is high, if you look at four of our learning-centered teachers at K2. And as you can see, there are a number of students who are receiving, and you can see at the top, we've got students in groups of two or three students who are individually, who are receiving phonics instruction, who are receiving math, either individually and small group, right? Again, we're modeling, and so again, students of intensity. So if next year, we added two students to this, our learning-centered teacher's caseload, she would have had 16 students, which is really pushing it for a K2. So we wouldn't necessarily want to do that. But I wanted to show you a K2 schedule, because I know there's a lot of concern at the lower grades, what that would look like. So Andre, for example, joins his second-grade colleagues in phonics. So his IEP says he needs four times 45 minutes of phonics instruction every day. And so you can see Liam and Sue were in a group, and we're adding a third person. So we go from a group of two students to a group of three students. Pat has much milder needs, two times 30 a week in terms of math, and some in push-in readiness, which is joined with Emma and Pat and Emma are in the same classroom. So again, this is a model, it's just to kind of give you a sense, obviously, if a student moved in with much more intensive needs, this learning-centered teacher would not be able to serve those needs. So that's sort of how caseload, and that's what we're looking at. So how 14 students on this learning-centered teacher caseload goes to the week. And then all of the other things that the teacher has to do. She has to test, she has to go to IEP meetings, she goes to consults, she works with families, and all of those different things. So that's hopefully just, kind of just illuminating kind of what we're looking at when we're looking at the proposed reduction in terms of eight learning-centered teachers. Questions?
But in this fictitious case, at this fictitious school, presumably, no teacher is significant, like, there's no teacher to spare. So how, I guess my point is, if there's a staff member who has this much work going on, and we were to eliminate whoever this is, where does their work go?
Well, so if you look, if you look at the range in terms of, all of the schools would need to redistribute. So if you go back to, again, when you're adding, you're adding one student per, in many, if you look at either this, or if you look at that, so you're adding one student per caseload, right? And so what people would do is, you look at your caseloads and you look at where they are grade-wise, which is why sometimes you see heavier caseloads in some grades versus others, depending on the school, because it's just, that's sort of what that cohort is. So I understand what you're saying, but what you would need to be doing is a redistribution of caseloads from nine special educators, for example, to eight.
But when I look at the caseloads here, and again, this is caseload and not workload, so it's hard to tell.
Yep.
I guess what I see is, for example, I don't see one additional student in some schools, I see three additional students, I see, like, that's a significant, and again, we don't know-
Yeah, yeah.
We don't know if those students are 1x30 or 4x45, right? We have no data on what's going on there.
Exactly, yeah.
But-
But on the aggregate again, so we're looking at, you know, there's a range from low intensity to high intensity. So you're looking at the aggregate in terms of what learning centers are currently doing. But yes, and it's a student per learning-centered teacher, it's not one student, you know, in terms of you're looking at increasing-
Understood. Understood, but I guess my question is,
Yep.
how do we know from this presentation whether it's possible and appropriate? Which I think is the question to take the eight learning center cuts.
So, you know, I think from this presentation, I think my goal was to kind of give you a context and a sense of, you know, what we're talking about. I think there's more work to be done in terms of making sure that school by school, learning center teacher by learning center, center teacher, we've looked at workload, and also modeled the workload, exactly as you've said, from what would it look like? Again, taking a school, and this is day four, just want to remind you.
Yeah.
Taking, taking a school and actually modeling this out, and looking at what would this look like, say it. So for example, Hays and Driscoll, where they're already pushing to the higher level of, you know, in terms of learning center, what would that look like? And that would give us the answer, where, where is this proposed cut not going to have, you know, everything has an impact, but where is this proposal going to have very minimal impact? When you're talking about adding a, a, a learning center ratio from 11 students to 12. And as you can see from the schedule, that doesn't mean there ever 12 students in the learning center. If you look at that K2 schedule, the most students that are ever in the learning center at one time is three. So we're not talking about, and I think that's why we need to, you know, think about instructional groupings, we're not ever talking about 15 students at any one time in the learning center. It's, that's across the week.
I think that, um, I guess part of my question is really, what does this look like when you model it?
Yeah.
Because I don't feel at this point, like, and especially also knowing what we know about how, which of course you know too, but maybe not everybody knows, that if you have an IEP signed, then you're expected to provide those services. And so we can't have a system that is, that has zero slack in it, because we, because it has to be designed to accommodate new students needing services, so.
And certainly, I think if you look at the numbers, this is not a system that has no slack at all in terms of, you know, looking.
But nor can it, right? We can't take it to zero slack either.
No, absolutely not.
Right.
Yeah, and, and, and we also have move-ins, right? So we know that, right? So, you know, in terms of, we know what the pattern is, we know what the churn is, in terms of what that looks like. And I think what, you know, in terms of the work that I think special ed directors and principals need to do, is really model for their schools what that would look like in terms of this reduction and this proposed reduction, based on the students they have now. If we did it now, what would it look like, right? In terms of, of, of doing that, to really answer that question.
And I have one more question, which is, are there national standards for learning center teachers in terms of workload that we're adhering to or not adhering to?
So the national standards, and I can certainly talk about the, the districts that post it. So for example, Boston, which is part of their contract, is 25.
25.
25.
Caseload.
25 students on, on a caseload. Somerville, who also posts it, it's between, I think, 15 and 25. I have to double check. Our like districts, when I've sort of benchmarked and talked to colleagues, are very similar to us, right? It's somewhere between eight and 15. But certainly, we are, you know, we don't want to benchmark against the national, and, and, and nor should we, right? That's not what Brookline has done, we provide robust services, we will continue to provide robust services. But we're very much under national benchmarks in terms of, you know. And in, you'll see in the literature, it's called resource. So if you look in terms of national benchmarks, they're called resource centers in most other states.
Could I ask something? I just wanted to get a more granular understanding of that sample workload you just presented. So, I mean, looking at it, so supposing that an extra student had to be added to that person's caseload, and I understand you said that was a relatively high caseload to begin with.
Yeah.
But where in that schedule could you even think of doing it, right? Yeah.
Well, and so certainly, I wouldn't necessarily.
Okay, so you're, I'm hearing people say add a kid, meaning like, just add, make the instructional groupings larger?
Karen knows this, but.
Yeah.
That, she did that, she added Pat and Andre, those in yellow. So you find students that have like IEPs, so required services, and you combine them. So, you know, some of them, it, it looks like the one above Adam, is that Adam? I can't see very well. On Friday, it looks like he's the only one.
Yeah.
Right? So she has a one-on-one, and that's, that's a gift to give that. But that would be easy if you had someone else who needed those same instructional skills, right? To add somebody, that, that's how you do these.
And I think what also happens, you know, in terms of, I think, and again, I don't know why, this particular case, is often you, you match kids to their needs, right? So if you're teaching phonics and you have new students, you look at your caseload, you look at what that student needs, and you group them based on what you're working on. And so it may be that you might have a, you know, a higher number than somebody else, but your kids, so like our three friends are getting phonics, a new student matches that group. And so learning centers look at that and figure out what, what's going to make sense.
Okay, I'm trying to remember who raised their hands in which order, so Carolyn, then Jesse.
Thanks, um, thank you for this, Dr. Schmuckler. Without wanting to create more work for you, and without really even knowing how we do this, but if it's available and not, not to answer right now, but for the next time or the time after that, I'd be interested to understand more of, in our current staffing, how are we doing on outcomes? I don't know how our, our special education outcomes are, are benchmarked or measured, but, and, and I'm not asking you to answer that now, but.
We can.
So that would be.
Yep.
That would be helpful for me to kind of understand, like, are we doing great as it is? Or are we already struggling? Thanks.
Jesse?
Yeah, hi, thank you. It seems, first of all, that there's lots more work to do, so I appreciate how far you've come in four days. And the second thing I wanted to say was that this, you know, sort of a, um, a snapshot in time of like a week ago, that was real, but not that you're showing us tonight. And then taking a look at, you know, once that model's in place, that capacity managing model or resource models in place, then we can, you know, work to tune it to say, well, if two more kids came in that had a general kind of, you know, IEP for something, what would it, how would it perturb it? And then it makes it pretty sort of striking, I guess, if half were removed of the learning center staff, what would happen to the coverage? And then, you know, we'd be able to see, or you'd be able to see, or show more strikingly what, how dramatic differences would be, because these are real people with real children.
Absolutely.
You know?
Yeah.
With, with only, only six or less hours a day of school.
Correct. And I think as, as you've seen, the proposal is for a reduction by one FTE. And again, it's K12, right? And so in terms of, it's, it's, it's a one FTE reduction, and that, in terms of the proposal.
Suzanne, and then Stephen.
So just to note that this is a schedule for a K to two person. So, you know, there's somebody else for, I don't know, three to five.
Right.
So when a new student comes in, and they're a K to two student, you're, you're going to be able to fit them in somewhere on your schedule already, depending on what their needs are.
Yeah.
So, and so that's not so hard. I will tell you that developing the schedule is the hardest part of the whole year. So, you know, kudos to all the work they have to do to get ready to make that happen. But once it's in place, you know, you can tweak things here and there, but you can add students, and you also might lose a student if a student either moves or if a student meets their goals, and they no longer have an IEP.
And, and one of the things that schools do is not everybody has the same grade bands, because it's really dependent on student needs. So it's common to have sort of K2, 3, 5, 6, 8, but some schools have different grade bands, and have needed to hire over the years special educators to serve the needs of certain cohorts of students that move up grade by grade. So there is variation in terms of how schools are using their learning center teachers and at what grade levels. And so we sort of, we really have to look at the gestalt of all of that.
Thank you for this. So, um, so, so I know this proposed, this proposal was not yours, and so thank you for walking us through the practical consequences of this, of this potential decision. Couple thoughts and a question. One is that, you know, we're coming off of a, of a period where there was an interruption in services to students with special needs for budget reasons. And so I think, I think the school committee is likely to be, uh, to scrutinize the consequence of budget-based decision, uh, a, a budget constraint on, on, uh, on, on these students. Second, one thing that you said when we were talking to you before you took this position, that I thought was really encouraging and exciting, was that you, you had been thinking about what kind of strategic analysis the district would benefit from, and thinking through what kind of efficiencies we might find in, in providing services to students with special needs. I know you haven't been on the job for long, but I guess my question to you is, is this likely to be the kind of cut you would have proposed? Is this where would you, is this where you would have started, do you think? I, I have to say, I, I feel very strongly disinclined myself to support a budget with this cut, given the recent difficulty in providing adequate services to students with IEPs and the 504s, especially in advance of any strategic analysis that recommends a cut like this. So it would go a long way for me to hear from you that this, and, and again, I know you haven't had the time to do it in in-depth analysis, to hear that this is something that you would be likely to recommend.
Before I answer that, can I clarify, and I think, I think I tried to do this actually when I spoke to you before, to my understanding, the issues, there's a difference between students getting contracted services.
That's right.
And what's happening.
That's right. It wasn't, that's right, it wasn't staffed services, it was contracted services.
It was contracted services, often for students, some of them would be services potentially at home, home-based services, tutoring services. And so, you know, I think we, I think those got merged in terms of what's happening at the school level in terms of, and, and absolutely, in terms of, you know, those contracted services are integral to those students' IEPs, but it, the impact was not on necessarily special ed service delivery across our schools on, during the school day. So I think separating those out.
But I think that makes it even more urgent that we don't make an error on yet another side of the equation. So that's why I think there may be, at least for me, a special sensitivity right now.
Absolutely, as we should have, right? We are talking about our most vulnerable students who are, have, you know, IEP plans that need to be implemented with fidelity.
Right.
And every student, you know, needs to, needs to have FAP. I mean, I think to answer your question, when I, you know, when you look at, and even this, you know, looking at the schedule, this is a very busy week, and the largest grouping has three students in it. There are many students in this schedule, which is, which is high for K2, as I said, who are getting individualized instruction, one-on-one during the school day. And, you know, I think as, you know, Suzanne said, that is a norm in Brookline, but it is not the norm in terms of, you know, I think many of, many of our districts. So do I think this is a, a prudent proposal in terms of where we are? Yes, I, I, I feel comfortable in terms of the gestalt of the proposal. I think, you know, as I've said, I just need time to make sure that I want to make decisions with, with more data than I've been able to look at. And it's not to say that they haven't looked, people have looked at the data. I think they came up with this proposal by looking at the data, in terms of all the special ed directors. This proposal came from a collaborative effort between Lisa and all the special ed directors. So it wasn't, it wasn't a proposal that came out of nowhere, in terms of really looking at, in many schools, we do have what would be considered, anywhere in the field, low caseloads. Not everywhere, not in every learning center, but it does, it did feel like, and I think, you know, even looking at the schedule, that adding, you know, moving a group from two to three is, is not, would not create any substantial impact in terms of special ed service delivery across the board. And so I think that is why this was put forward as a proposal. And again, I think as you can see, it doesn't mean that the elementary schools can each take a cut, right? We have to look at that. There may be some that can't, right? And then we need to look, and, and the high school is looking at theirs as well in terms of caseloads and numbers, right? So I think that's, I think that's, that's the work that needs to happen now.
Thank you.
Sure.
Something went by me really quickly, and I must not have been paying attention, because it just sort of surprised me. Could we go to where Jesse asked about the high school, that slide again? Because your answer to that, so when Jesse did the math, he was saying that that would be about 25% of students are on caseload.
2,000 in the pool, and about 4, 450 to 500 there, yeah.
And that number surprised me, does that seem?
It's a bit high, it's a bit high, I don't think, I mean, the, the high school special ed caseload is not 25%. And I don't know what it is off the top of my head. So in terms of, you know, I think 23 to 30 eligible students, it's not, you know, they're not 25% of students at the high school on IEPs.
Yeah.
But there may be 20% or 21%, it's not 25. As, as the district, I think we're up 19 or 20% on the aggregate.
Across the whole district?
Across the whole district, yeah.
Mariah? Unless this is a follow-up, Mariah had her hand up.
It is a follow-up.
Okay, go ahead, Helen.
So, and if you look back from when you were here before.
So long ago.
Uh, so long ago, it wasn't so long ago. What was the percentage of students?
It was around 16.
16, that's what I thought.
Yeah.
So, and today, I'm sorry, you said.
19, 20, I think it's 19 on the.
And obviously, part of it is probably COVID, but there's probably other things too.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I have a follow-up question about para-staffing in the learning centers, because I recall, for example, last year at Lawrence, there were, the learning center for K2 did not have enough paras to fully staff. And so, and I, I know that they weren't alone, right? That was an issue throughout the district. So will you be looking also at para-staffing as you're thinking about this? Because especially for students who perhaps have a para on their IEP, but then the learning center doesn't have a para, you know, where does that? Like, it just sort of snowballs in terms of the strain on the learning center teacher and the staffing available, so making sure that we're considering that para-staffing situation as well, that would be great.
Yeah.
And then my next question is, when will you think the deeper analysis be ready? Day six? Just kidding.
You know, I think it's, it's, you know, needs to happen in terms of, you know, I think the next step is really for directors and principals collectively to really look at it together, in terms of, sort of at the school level, just in terms of the impact. And again, principals and the directors and principals and their learning center teachers, in fact, you know, need to be part of this discussion in terms of they know what's going on in their school and sort of where the pressure points are. So I think that analysis has to be done. You know, and again, we know times of the essence in terms of decision-making. So it's, it's ongoing, I would say.
I guess we need to figure out sort of what, what your office feels able to provide in a reasonable timeframe, and also what the.
Back in two weeks.
That was my question.
Whether we can provide at least, you know, school by school, some are more in-depth workload analysis within two weeks. We'll certainly take a look at that.
And will you also, do you have more slides on the 4.9? Or are we just talking about the eight tonight?
We're just talking about the eight. I can, if you go back, I can talk a little bit about just, to the first slide. And so that, that's the remainder of the proposal in terms of the 12.9, as they stand. So you've certainly heard the district-wide psychologist, point four nurse, a social worker at the high school, which is retirement, guidance through attrition, the Bright Center clinician, which is a, an in-house switch and a reduction based on need. Other point two at Guidance Elementary, and then there's 1.1 overall at BEEP. I think as you, you know, your, Margaret is working on consolidation, and as she's been doing that work, she's also realized that given the consolidation, there may be different staffing implications. And so I think really, and she's going to come back and talk about that. So that 1.1 in terms of cuts is not under review in terms of whether that 1.1 will be cut, will be reduced, but really what makes sense for her in terms of staffing based on both her programmatic considerations and her consolidation. So in two weeks' time, we will come back with clarity on all of those as well.
Okay, so that'll be quite, quite an OSS presentation two weeks from now, because we're currently also planning to do settlements, transportation, and tuition at that meeting.
Okay.
So, I mean, we can, we can discuss, but that just.
Yeah, yeah, I mean.
Okay, and so it is from the committee's point of view, is the idea that sort of every learning center reduction would need to be, like, we would need to have explained how that caseload slash workload would be taken, is realistically taken over by others at that school? Okay. Yeah, yeah, well, I'm asking the committee, I mean, is, is that the level at which we're asking Dr. Schmuckler to, to present next time?
I don't know, we need it at that level, if, if she can assure, you'll show us the caseloads, and you showed us the numbers, I think that should, I mean, you know, I think that should be okay.
Good.
What I was going to ask, though, for is those positions that we're cutting, just, I guess, to somehow inform us of what, who will do. I guess to somehow inform us of what, who will do that work if that person's.
That's the question.
That's the question.
Okay.
Yeah, I guess that's a less convoluted way of asking what I was asking.
And I agree with you.
Okay.
Helen, are you asking about this list or more specifically learning center? You're asking about this?
Well, most of this is, you know, if there's, you know, can the retiring social worker take that work for an example? I'm sorry. Taking, for example, the retiring social worker, how, how is it thought to divide that caseload?
Yeah, and Matt, Matt has looked at that in terms of the data, and we'll present that in two weeks' time, in terms of it, every one of those cuts has an impact because it pushes other people's caseloads up.
Yeah.
And so the data will show what does that look like and by how many, and by how much. And, and he has done that analysis, and so he'll share that in two weeks' time.
Of the 4.8.
Yeah, of all, of all.
The 3.8 or whatever that is in the BEP.
Correct, yeah. And the BEP, Margaret will talk about what makes sense in terms of the programmatic decisions that she's making with consolidation.
Actually, can we go to Jesse first and then back to you, Mariah?
Is it too early to ask about the district-wide psychologist then? Do we want to wait until it comes back up, Andy? Or can I just ask a clarification question about it? So.
Please go ahead.
Are there today, school psychologists on-site at each school?
Yes.
And given what our speaker spoke about before, on the district-wide level, it seemed like a lot of her work was specifically and explicitly student-facing. Is that correct? I mean.
Absolutely, yeah.
So, and, and is she certified at a level higher or different, with additional certifications than the other psychologists?
No, not necessarily. I think because of the work that she's done, she's developed expertise in certain areas as she explained, because she does do, she does do the out-of-district testing.
Okay.
So many of the out-of-district schools do not have their own psychologists, and so we end up having to do, some do, but a lot don't, and so we end up having to do all of the evaluations through district personnel.
So.
So she does, she does all of those as well.
Right, so there, again, it's that look at how, how, what, what the impact would be on the steady state.
Yep.
Of the one psychologist per school, if suddenly a district-wide psychologist isn't there, and now you're pulling people out to go to out-of-district and all of the other functions, so.
That's accurate.
That gap needs to be looked at, because that could end up being more expensive than the one FTE savings.
And some of our bigger schools, we have 1.5, 1.6. They're 4.0 psychologists at the high school.
Mm-hmm.
So, but, but yes.
Yes, thank you.
That will have impact.
Yeah.
And Mariah?
So you said in two weeks, though, Matt will sort of talk more about all of that. My question now, I'm really interested to hear that, but, and maybe you can say, oh, well, Matt will talk about this, but the, the Bright Center clinician and just more or less how this impacts our relationship with Bright in general? Okay, but it doesn't have to be tonight. You can say, I'll do it in two weeks.
I can, I can do the quick. So we currently have a contract with the Brookline Mental Health Center for two social workers. This actually came on their request. They have struggled to staff the two FTEs that service Bright, and currently, there's actually one social worker serving Bright, and there's one vacant position right now that they have not been able to fill. So we're moving it in-house, and because they've had the one clinician, they have really managed really well with just the one clinician. So this proposal came out of just our experience. And so it's, that's sort of, it's a budget-neutral piece in terms of, we're bringing the contract in-house. Right now, it's in contracted services. We're bringing it in-house, and it is one of the pieces, and in terms of where we need to do work on this, is that it, it might have already been double-counted in terms of that. So we just, we have to kind of calibrate and make sure that that hasn't gone twice in the count.
By twice in the count, you mean it's not actually a savings, because we're shifting it from a contracted service to in-house?
Yeah, it's budget-neutral, but it may have already come out of the base.
So we'll wait to hear more about the actual, in two weeks?
Exactly.
Okay, okay.
And if that isn't, then we're going to need to look at, at, at other efficiencies in other places.
But more broadly, if I recall correctly, Bright is for students who are returning from significant absence, so we will still be addressing the needs of those students. Like, I don't know whether we're currently meeting our needs, whether we're overstaffed, but Matt will also talk about whether we're meeting the needs of those students who.
And I think that decision was made because we are very much meeting the needs of the students in terms of the volume. Also in Bright, they've also been using it, it is for kids who are coming back from hospitalizations, but they've also been using it to prevent hospitalization. So it's really, really providing sort of that, that wraparound support, but it's, it has worked really well with the one clinician. And it is my understanding that the current clinician is interested in shifting into the FTE from, you know, contracted clinician to a BHS clinician, so the continuity will stay, will be there.
This might not be a question for you, because it's, because I don't, I don't know how much you've been able to delve into, but where in the budget book does contracted services show up?
Under the professional, isn't it the professional and technical services line?
That's, that's what that means. Okay, thank you.
Okay, are there any more questions or comments for Dr. Schmuckler right now? Okay, so you have quite a job ahead of you in the next couple of weeks. Oh, Helen, yeah.
I want to thank you for jumping in in four days and being able to explain all this and getting us the slides and getting us at least three-quarters of the way to where we need to be. So thank you so much.
My pleasure. Thanks, Helen.
Thanks.
Can I just make one comment?
Yep.
Andy, so are we agreed that we are not voting this tonight? We will wait until two weeks to, just close the loop on that one?
Just to make it explicit, I didn't think it was even necessary to say that, but yeah.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so this takes us to the Office of Educational Equity. Dr. Guillory, do you want to remind us of what was on the table here?
Yes, so the, I think there was a question about the, the equity leads. So this slide is to provide some clarity around that. The FY26 budget requested $44,000 to support the work of the 22 equity leads. This was being charged to the Title II grant, and should there be a wide-scale shift to OEE or to that office, this, these funds would need to be reallocated. So last week, or last time we presented, the OEE reduction that was listed there was for the entire office, the two staff members and the, the accompanying budget that went along with that, minus some reductions that we had already taken out. But the question was about the equity leads and where was that funding source? And that funding source was in a different budget line, which is Title II. We currently have 12 equity leads at 24,000 for this school year that have been charged, again, to the Title II grant. And additional, additional connections to OEE is that the BEF has also committed to providing funding for OEE for next year, which was, is the ideas membership, as well as tech services to support the equity cycles at the, to the tune of $9,500. So all of this in total, the 44,000 for Title II, the 14,000 from BEF, and the 9,500 from BEF should total to $67,000. 14 of that is, well, the, what is that, 23.5 is on, on BEF. And so we would, if OEE is reduced in its entirety, we'd have to reach, go back to the BEF to repurpose that particular funding, or look at other ways to provide services in-house.
I'm sorry, I maybe missed something. How, what adds up to 67,500 here?
44,000 from Title II, and then the 23.5 from BEF.
Oh, did the proposal presented last time include not funding the equity leads?
The proposal last time, that funding did not include the equity leads.
Oh.
Yep. That was.
Can I just get one more question?
Sure.
So does this mean that you're saying that in addition to the $337,000 from last week, you're saying there's an additional $67,000 in savings? I guess I'm, I'm confused what we're seeing here.
So what you're seeing, in addition to what was shared last week.
Okay.
What you're seeing is $44,000 in Title II.
Yep. And then the, so this is additional savings associated with that?
Yes. And you're seeing $23,000, 23,500 from the BEF.
Okay.
A BEF grant.
Thank you.
All right, that's Val and then Carolyn.
Yeah, thanks. So what, what are we allowed to charge the Title II?
Jody, you want to speak more to that? It's professional, Title II is professional development services as such, but Jody can give more details around that.
That's basically the detail, is the only allowable expense for Title II A is professional development expenses.
Actually, what is our grant for Title II this year and, or do you know next year's even?
We are level funding next year, not knowing what's happening with the federal government, and I didn't bring my budget book in, so I can't tell you how much it is this year in total. It's in the back of the budget book, though.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Sarah?
Is commentary allowed or just questions?
Of course commentary is allowed, yeah.
Some of the people that we heard from tonight said so much, so I just want to make sure that everybody heard when Laura Miller, Miller said that people who have been in this type of work for years find that what they're learning, what the equity leads are learning is, is still, you know, current and pushes them up to another level. And so I just wanted to break down a little bit what's up there for you, is that when you have a model where you have the assistant director of OEE training equity leads, and then the equity leads eventually bringing that to, to teachers, you have a very cost-effective model where we're using our in-house staff in order to get to the teacher and then to the student. So I just want to make sure, in case people don't kind of realize just how valuable that is, that you heard it when Laura Miller said it, that what the equity leads offer the teachers is even for somebody who's experienced in this type of work, is still outstanding.
Carolyn and then Helen.
So.
Yeah, Carolyn and then Helen.
I'm so sorry.
That's okay. I had had my hand up and then I ran out for a second. No problem. Where it says the BEF is funding for FY26, BEF has already made, has already done grants for FY26?
Yes.
Okay. In their current cycle, like rolling, or from, or that they, or that they granted last year?
In October, yeah. They moved it up.
Okay.
To align with our budgeting cycle.
Oh, perfect.
Their system-wide grants.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Helen, yeah?
So I'm curious, this year we have 12, this is for you, Jody, we have 12 equity leads, and you're talking about going up to 22 for next year? And the reason being?
The plan was always for the 22, but this year we were only able to secure the 12.
I see.
So.
So not for lack of funding, it's for lack of people who wanted to do it?
That were able to commit to it at that time.
I got it.
Yep.
And Val?
Thanks. Does the, the BEF technical services support training the equity leads?
That was more for the, the services for BIG, I believe, for the video modules. So Kristi was working on a resource repository for educators, and a video repository for educators. And so she, rather than doing that herself, as she had started doing it, we pitched a proposal to BEF to have BIG support that work, I believe.
And that's a real current way of offering training to teachers, is like on your own time with videos, having modules. And the modules, you know, sometimes can be multifaceted. You'll have both video and readings, and then time together to talk about it. And it just, it's a way to reach more people.
I'm just trying to get clear, is this an informational slide? Or is, is the administration now proposing that in addition to the two positions that were proposed to be cut last week, we also cut these things?
I think this is, this is an informational slide, but it was in response to the questions around the equity lead funding, so we wanted to provide you with where that comes from. Now, if that, so what sits within our budget purview would be the $44,000 under Title II, and we would have to then, if this is absolved, then we'd have to look, go back to the BEF to say how we, could we repurpose these funds for something else as such?
I can just make sure if you'd last.
That this would not accrue to any savings that would be related to closing the gap. I just want to make sure everyone understands that. Because the 44,000, we have already cut all of the PD out of the operating budget.
So there's no other, there's no other, there's no other purpose to which those funds could be put?
Right, so we.
You had critical PD and literacy PD retained. Why couldn't you reallocate it to literacy PD?
I don't know. Could you do that? I guess you could.
Okay. And the same thing for BEF. I mean, you could, I'm not saying we want to do these things, I'm just saying, we don't know if they'll allow you to reallocate, but if they let you reallocate, you should be doing it to something that would save money. I mean, geez, why would we be doing this if we're not trying to save money, right? Like, that's the, that's why we're here, unfortunately, so, okay.
Yeah, no, no.
All right, is there any further discussion, or would someone like to make a motion?
So I'm confused. What, what are we moving? I know we haven't moved it yet, but.
No one has done it yet.
I have, I have comments.
Okay, so Stephen's hand first and then Mariah.
I have a question for Dr. Guillory. So if the OEE office were to, to cease to exist, where would some of the core functions of the OEE office move? Specifically, where would the workaround reporting out on, on bias incidents go? Where would some of the work, reporting and adjudicating cases of hate and bias incidents go? And this is just putting aside work relating to their core mission relating to disproportionality across SCL, academics, and so on.
So, great question, Stephen. We're actually looking at that for all of the central reductions as such. The work that the team had been doing was in close connection with student services, so some of that would live there as such. Certainly the bias work, much of that lives, we have it in human resources as well, certainly the, the adult pieces of that. And then the schools, it's still, that work still sits with the schools as well, but it's coordinating it centrally, and we still have quite a bit of work to do around that once the dust truly settles with all of the decisions that we're making.
I have a very hard time voting in favor of this proposal. I think it was the right thing to do, to bring it to the table, to talk about it, because it is a central office, and I think we needed to look at all of the options. And I think even in the, was it last week that this came to us? Okay, last week, we have seen further dismantling of the federal infrastructure that protects our students, the Department of Education. Half of the employees were riffed last night? Two nights ago? Two nights ago? We have, or at least I have, I didn't look at the news today, so I could be behind, very little information on the impact of this on our students and the protected classes of students within our district. And I have similar feelings about this for Office of Student Services as well. As we see the federal dismantling of supports and protections for our students, letting go of any of those protections here where they most directly are seeing our students and ensuring that those protections will still be retained for our students who deserve them, it concerns me greatly that we would, that we would take that, that we would open our students and our staff up to that level of risk. And so I think that when it comes down to it, I don't see myself. And so I think that when it comes down to it, I don't see myself being able to do that. I think that our students and our staff deserve better, they deserve to feel safe, they deserve to feel protected. And while the federal government is not providing those levels of protections, and in fact is making people feel vulnerable and scared, we need to be reinforcing those protections locally. So that's where I am on this right now. I don't know if we're taking a vote tonight or not, but I feel gravely concerned for all of the different groups impacted. And I think we need more people supporting our students and not fewer.
Val and then Suzanne.
Maybe Suzanne, if you want to go first, you're making a comment.
I'm making a comment. What are you doing?
Comment and a motion. Go ahead.
Oh. I actually agree with Mariah, wholeheartedly. As someone mentioned tonight, we actually are very close to a minority majority in our student population, certainly at the high school, probably down at the K-8s. This is part of our core values. We saw that in our strategic plan, we see that in our budget book. This is a resource for 8,000 people plus, 7,000-plus students and 8,000-plus staff, all needing protection and help. I do think that this is a student-facing department in many ways. We've heard from many people, the contact they've had with OEE, the help they've gotten, the resources they find there. Our OEE people are hard at work out in the field, they're not up here on the fifth floor sitting down, they're out in the schools, they're working with students, they're working with families. And I believe now is the time to recommit to our core value and to offer our support through the Office of OEE. Thank you.
Thanks, Suzanne. Val?
Thank you. I don't disagree that at the federal level in particular, we're seeing horrific, horrific policies and decisions hourly by tweet or whatever it's called now. At the same time, I think that our, our students and our staff are best served in the buildings with programs like Steps to Success, The Calculus Project, Tutorial, Scholars, Metco, ACE. In the, in the face of a $5 million budget gap, it's hard for me to think about a $337,000 office when we still have a $5 million gap. I want to support Safe Spaces, I want to make sure that we're fully funding all of those building-based programs, but I would move that we take the $337,000 reduction.
Is anyone seconding that motion?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Helen.
Is it the $400,000?
Right, so just to be clear, you're talking about the 337 from last week, nothing on the slide that was first presented tonight?
Well, I don't think I understand this slide. I don't think, the 337 is what I'm moving.
Yeah.
I think the actual amount is 405045.
It's that, it's our original number.
Can I?
Plus this. Yeah, well, but that's, that's my question. Val, who just made the motion, says she doesn't understand this slide. This is a new proposal tonight. In fact, it was a surprise to me that it was, it's being framed as a proposal at all, because it was actually, as you said, Dr. Gilleri, a response to some questions. Actually, members, I think, were seeking reassurance that some of these activities could continue without the, without the central office staffing. And I was personally surprised that this has now become a proposal to eliminate these things as well. I don't know how other members are understanding it. Val? Yeah, do you want to clarify, or just, I want to be sure I'm understanding your motion correctly.
My motion is the original amount.
Yeah, so not including?
I don't think I understand this one yet.
Okay. Mariah?
Can I just comment first on my second?
Yeah.
Because I want to make it clear, I value the people who do this work. I think it's really important. I think if we were in any other situation right now, we would not be cutting this. I think that, but I do believe, as Val said, we do have, what's the most important thing are the programs that we do do for kids that directly affect them. Steps to Success, The Calculus Project, all the, the other ones that we have, and taking kids into BEEP, which is a critical piece. I mean, we presently are supporting 40 kids on scholarships, mostly from Brookline Housing. That kind of work is really critical. So, like I said, it's really pains me to do it, but I think we have to.
Okay, Sarah and then, and then Mariah.
I think our commitment to equity is one of the things that defines us in this town. And I feel that, you know, it's throughout our strategic plan, it's something that I, when I think of who we have as students and what they get out of, what, coming to school here, tolerance for each other and success for everyone is a big part of what we do. This feels really core to me. And you'll notice that it is in, you know, all of our different departments, doesn't just live in the Office of Educational Equity. I think that when people say that we have these programs, they're specific to certain groups, and in order to continue the work that's been going on for years here in Brookline that we feel very proud of, I think that we need to have an office that oversees all of that, especially at the K-8 level, where those programs you have mentioned aren't as strong as they are at the high school. And the thing that really brings it home to me is the response to racial incidents. I don't think that our building principals, on top of everything else that they do, can really delve into these issues in a fair way. To have the, the work that Claire and Kristi do, to have them show up and back up the principals when they're, you know, sorting through these different issues are invaluable. And I, I just can't really imagine what's going to happen if we don't have them.
I, I just, I guess I would frame a question to Dr. Gilleri. Who would even do these things on the slide? My understanding is these things are going away because there would be no one to lead these efforts. So is that correct? Because that's why this money would be accrued to the original proposed savings, because there is no one to do this work.
So when my team and I discussed this earlier today, the, we asked that very question, if the office were to be dissolved, that leadership piece, the part that Sarah talked about earlier, would be missing. And so this synchronized coordination, I think, is what gets lost there. It's, and so that's, that's, that was our hard grappling point as well. So that's the manner in which we thought about it. Doesn't mean that it's impossible for it to occur, but it won't have, I think, the same gravitas with the coordinated efforts that both Claire and Kristi have been leading within the organization. So, you know, part of it was, to your response, to your question, Andy, was, yes, this was put up in the context of these were responding to questions, and the question was, what, what other funding was connected to the Office of Educational Equity? And that additional funding was the $44,000 that sits in the Title II grants. And then Claire also shared where we also have the BEF funding that's connected to that. So that coordinated effort is the reason why this slide was created, just to say, here is the rest of what's connected to the Office of Educational Equity.
Is it the recommendation of the administration that if the two central office positions were to go away, then this activity would be so hard to carry on that, that we should also make these cuts as well?
Well, it's the synchronized, the synchronized leadership of it, I think. So, you know, if the entire office goes away, that coordinated effort, I think, is the way, is Claire back there? Claire, do you want to share your thoughts on this?
Yes. So without Kristi and I, it would be incredibly difficult to continue to do this work. We are still, our, our plan was to train the trainer, and we have started doing some of that work, but we are not nearly where we need to be in regards to making sure all of our equity leads are trained so they can lead that work in the buildings. We only had three equity cycles this year, and so we still have schools to get to. We're doing residencies, we just did Lincoln this week, but we have not done our equity cycles at Lincoln, Baker. And so there's still a lot more work to do, as well as Driscoll. And in regards to the memberships and things like that, you know, if we don't have the equity leads and we don't have professional development, that's what the membership was for, so we can make sure that we can make, ensure that we have professional development for all of our equity leads and people participating in the cycles.
Just general comment, and to kind of bring it back to what we're doing, which is trying to balance this budget and kind of where Val started, we have a long way to go. We've been talking amongst ourselves, hearing from the community, hearing about the changes, you know, we know what the changes have been in the central administration over the past number of years, and it's grown substantially. You know, we've gotten a lot of feedback, some feedback from, from teachers, former head of the high school, who I think uses the phrase equities in the schoolhouse. We have wonderful building leaders, we have wonderful teachers. This is an Office of Educational Equity. We want to ensure that our, our students are, are in small classes to the extent possible with teachers. We heard this from building leaders at a curriculum subcommittee meeting, talking about improved MCAS scores. So, and, and we have to cut things. We can't not. And, and for anybody who's thinking about not cutting this to zero and, and having to go to the town, we can't do that if we have not exhausted every possibility that doesn't touch educators in the classroom. So that has to be our, our focus, difficult as it is.
Yeah, Steven?
I just want to make two remarks. One is that, as, as we all know, we've received, we've, we've, we've watched many presentations on the school committee about various disproportionalsities in academic achievement, in socio-emotional learning, in belonging, in sped referrals, in disciplinary action, and they've all, they've all shown stark racial disproportionalsities. The Stanford Opportunity Project prior to COVID showed that Brookline was trending the wrong way, even relative to our peers, and that difference was also stark. Our solution to this at the time was to staff up the Office of Educational Equity, because even though we have many individual programs that are designed to remedy some of these disproportionalsities specifically, at the time, we diagnosed the problem to be systemic. So our solution at the time was to try to address the problem systemically through a centralized mechanism, that was the Office of Educational Equity. We then wanted to staff it up, because, now I feel like I'm being Helen, trying to give a historical perspective, but this is where, this is where my mind is at. Then we wanted to staff it up, because we thought if we weren't sufficiently addressing it systemically, the, what we had to do was double down and put more resources towards the systemic problem. The second comment I want to make is that we've received a tremendous amount of comments on the Office of Educational Equity. And one thing that, to me, separates these comments from the comments on other budget items that they, is that they seem to be markedly ideological. Very few of them, I think, actually concern themselves with what the Office of Educational Equity actually does. Some of them did, a few, small number of them did actually talk about what OEE actually did. Those were written by students who uniformly advocated to us for retaining Kristi, who they thought was providing real value to them as students, and teachers who talked about the, the professional development work that the Office of Educational Equity was doing. And that was not ideological, they were talking about the real value that OEE, to their mind, was delivering, and that really made an impression on me. And I'm saying that because if we are finding that OEE is not delivering results, if the data does not show, as it does not, that there has been a change in the disparities of outcome, and a lot of this, of course, is not OEE's fault, there are national trends, but there, we are also investing locally in making a difference. And if we're finding that we're not making a difference, that does not necessarily mean we have to abandon a systemic investment in making a change. It could mean that we could change our approach. I think to divest from an OEE means that we are divesting from a systemic engagement with racial disproportionalsities in the district. It means we're, in the name of closing this budget gap. I know we have major budget constraints right now, but the idea of abandoning a systemic problem in Brookline is.
Racial disabilities and.
That's right. It's not just racial, but it's all kinds of inequities. That's deeply troubling to me, even if it's to go back to a deeper investment in individual programs that we know that work. I think we have, we have systemic issues in Brookline, and we need to address them systemically. So that's my comment, and that explains how I'll be voting. Thanks for listening.
All right. The motion on the floor is to eliminate the two central office positions in the Office of Educational Equity. If anyone wants to propose an amendment, it better be now. All right, let's move to a vote, and let's start at the other end this time. So Carolyn?
Yes.
Val?
Yes.
Helen?
Yes.
Suzanne?
No.
Mariah?
No.
Steven?
No.
Sarah?
No.
Jessie?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well.
Yeah. Given that vote, sorry. Given that vote, is one of the people who voted yes maybe going to move the additional 67.5?
I'll move it if no one else will. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that one? Carolyn? Yes.
Yes.
Val?
Yes.
Helen?
Yes.
Suzanne?
I don't even know. Epstein.
Mariah?
Epstein.
Steven?
Yes.
Sarah?
No.
Jessie?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. And this brings us to math specialists and K-8 curriculum coordinators. Dr. Gilleri or Jody?
It's Dr. Fortuna.
The Office of Teaching and Learning holds a critical responsibility to support the academic growth of every student in our district. Our work is anchored in a vision where every student is equipped to grow intellectually, think critically, and develop empathy as they navigate our complex and ever-changing world. This vision shapes and drives our daily efforts within the office. Of the 7,080 students the district serves, 4,609 are in grades K-8. The OTL budget reductions being discussed tonight will directly affect these K-8 students. This impact to K-8 adds to the already difficult cuts we've had to make in supplies, professional learning, and leadership within the Office of Teaching and Learning. This evening, I'm presenting a revised proposal for the Curriculum Coordinator structure, a plan developed with a deep commitment to a vision. The belief that every student deserves the opportunity to grow intellectually, think critically, and understand empathetically has been central to the reflectionary visions of this proposal. Reducing one senior director position and nonessential PD have also been key factors in reshaping this plan. Despite the significant budget deficit projected for FY '26, I have modified the original proposal to reduce 2.8 FTE positions. I have modified the original proposal to reduce 2.8 FTE positions to a proposal to reduce only 1.3 FTE positions for the curriculum coordinators. After careful consideration, it became clear that our middle grades, particularly in curriculum content areas, require more direct support. With that in mind, I'm presenting the following revised curriculum leader structure for the Office of Teaching and Learning. One Director of Elementary Education for K to 5. A Director of Middle School Humanities. A Director of Middle School STEM. The new one is this one. And the reason for this is to have content-specific PD and meetings for our STEM departments and our humanities departments, where we cut all non-essential PD this year. I felt that this would be an important add back in for our structure. Also, given the loss of a senior director, there won't be somebody centrally that can backfill some of that work. So the recommendation is to have content area collaborators for our middle school and a Director of Elementary Education, which is a fairly standard model for our K to 5s. Do we want to take math specialists separately?
Yes.
Wait, so the curriculum coordinator reduction is now the top proposal from the previous proposal?
Yes, it's 1.3.
Okay.
And I'm sorry, Jody, this is... Thank you. So the previous...
The previous proposal would have eliminated all curriculum coordinators, had a Director of Elementary Education, a Director of Middle School Education, and it also would have completely eliminated our Director of World Language position. This takes that position, our World Language position, down to a .5 position. She'd have an approximate caseload of 14 teachers, and the humanities and STEM coordinator would have a caseload of 41 to 42.
So I'm wondering why we wouldn't have the high school coordinator do 6 through 12?
It would be adding eight schools onto the high school coordinator's position. This would actually create positions that are equal to the high school positions. So it would add three subject areas, three different contents, 6, 7, and 8, even though it's also, I'll use social studies for an example, since we heard from Greg tonight. It would add those three content areas on top of the four that they already have spread across eight schools. I didn't feel that that was realistic for them. At one point, it might have been, but...
Jody, could you comment on how the literacy data work will be done now? And I'm just sort of looking at the Director of Elementary Education, and now there's two middle school positions, but only one elementary education position, and maybe none of these positions were going to do the literacy data work. But where is that work going to be done now?
That will still live centrally with either me doing it or me in a combination of our elementary director.
This, okay, this position. I see. But in terms of students served and staff served, is it not quite discrepant to have two middle school directors versus one elementary director?
It is. The thinking behind it is, at the elementary level, we don't want to be starting too many initiatives at once. So we really want that person that can follow an initiative from beginning to end and then start the next initiative with the elementary people. The difference for me, in thinking about this, between the elementary and the middle school is that our middle school people really need that content, subject area specificity. Elementary teachers do as well. However, there's only so much that an elementary teacher can handle coming at them, and we don't want them drinking out of a fire hose.
Carolyn.
And then, I'm looking at the... So, and visual arts, health and wellness, and performing arts, no change?
No change.
Okay, thank you.
Sarah.
I'm surprised I don't know the answer to my own question. I'm going to ask you for something specific. So I see in the title, Curriculum Coordinator, right? And I know that our town holds really dear the idea of not putting a textbook in front of everybody and teaching our kids the same things that are taught in Florida, California, and Texas, right? We want to have our teachers really, you know, teaching what they're good at. I'm not convinced that what I see up there would help with the curriculum coordinator part of it. So are we, is, you know, we're getting to know you. Are you assuming that we will rely on textbooks and paid-for curriculum more often? If we replace our curriculum coordinators with these Directors of Elementary Education and the other two, I could understand how they could be very good at helping us out with differentiation and how to teach, like, what are good pedagogical strategies? But I'm not sure where the curriculum coordination sits anymore.
This is where the change actually comes in, Sarah. I wasn't sure that one middle school, I lost confidence that one middle school person could do it. And so by giving somebody two departments to be able to coordinate that curriculum, it won't be at the high level that we have now because we have a single coordinator for each department. But with the middle school focus and the ability to have just two departments, I was hoping that that would actually help more with the actual curriculum coordination and not allow us to slip back into a simply textbook-based model for our middle school.
I guess, I understand your point about how the elementary teachers can't drink out of a fire hose. But I don't really understand how a general educator could be specialized in, you know, a third-grade teacher could be specialized in math, science, ELA, and social studies. So is the reality that we don't teach as much science and social studies, and we, you know, really dig deep on math and ELA? Is that what we could expect to see?
I think that's a yes and a no piece. It's a yes and. Our new literacy program is not a replacement for science and social studies instruction at all, but it does have some science and social studies woven into the scope and sequence that our curriculum coordinators now are really working hard to align and to make sure that the units are in place. We have a fairly established math curriculum with investigations right now. We have a social studies curriculum that Greg Porter has worked and written grants for that is coming into play now. And science is probably our weakest area where central office, and that'd be the next area that the Director of Elementary Ed would really have to focus in on.
I'm trying to think of other solutions, and I don't know if this makes any sense at all. But I think about the high school, where the curriculum coordinators have a number of courses that they coordinate, but they teach a course. Would we be able to get these kinds of savings if each curriculum coordinator taught one course in one of the schools, a .2?
We tried to figure out how that schedule would work with continuity, and we couldn't come to a good place with anybody besides the World Language Coordinator because World Language doesn't meet every day within sixth grade. It's easier for her to teach a class and have a common section. With having them just do a .2, they wouldn't necessarily have the same kids every day, and it could be disruptive to the students' learning because of the different schedules between the buildings.
Could I ask you a question about what the OTL org chart would look like after this? So these 3.5 curriculum coordinators would all be your direct reports? And then, so the remaining Senior Director of Teaching and Learning, would their job description change from what it currently is?
It would change. They would, all those wonderful programs that Helen just mentioned, Steps to Success, Scholars, I'm forgetting the list now, The Calculus Project, they would manage that plus our grant operations. And they would also be responsible for some of the data functions as well that happen in the office. We're trying to figure out how to parse out that data work because it's so important.
Thanks. Carolyn.
Thanks, Jody. So where the World Language Curriculum Coordinator is now .6?
She's currently .8.
Okay, I thought so, but it says .6 on the org chart. Is the other .2 the course she teaches?
Yes.
Okay, and so, and I'm saying she, I'd rather use just the term so it's not a specific person. So that person, I'm guessing that means they would now teach two courses? Okay.
Correct.
And so in terms of individual humans, we're talking about one?
Correct.
I guess that, the question that that brings to me is, is that enough savings for that much disruption?
It seems like, if I can, it seems like I worry about our curriculum without having people that new teachers can go to and get information, get support. One person, K through 5, it's not a lot of people. And there's how many teachers K through 5? Probably 600.
27 sections at each grade.
Okay, I can't do the math that quick, sorry. That's where we count on you, or Andy. I just, I don't know. I don't see that.
Sorry, if anybody else wants to speak, go ahead. I don't want to over... Okay, I'll make a comment. As we've been considering all this, I've been trying to reach out to as many people as I can, including teachers, friends who are veteran teachers, and really just being like, if you had to choose. And the message that I get is the high value and need of the curriculum coordinator. So I would not, I would have been not prepared yet to vote on the previous. And I'd say I'm not prepared to vote on this at this point either, based on that understanding.
Mariah.
Jody, if you knew that this was going to be your final proposal, would you have proposed what you proposed in the middle? Like, if this had been the proposal, would you have brought it forward to begin with?
No. No, this was really after careful reflection on the whole gestalt of what was happening in the world of teaching and learning and all the other cuts that we're absorbing and the disproportionality for the K to 8 that the cuts we have so far are.
Thank you.
Is the committee ready to move on to discussing math specialists? Unless somebody wants to make a motion. And I don't see one, so perhaps we should move on for now.
So as you know, we're proposing a cut of three FTE math specialists. It is important to note that this proposal does not diminish the extraordinary contributions of our math specialists. We can point to their impact in the data. They are essential to both our students and our teachers. However, as with many of the decisions we face, this change will have an impact on our students. In this difficult moment, we are focused on minimizing harm, making responsible fiscal decisions, and navigating these challenges thoughtfully. Our math specialists provide direct student support and staff coaching, and their work has been critical in restoring our math achievement to pre-pandemic levels. We are proud to be one of the few districts who have reached this milestone. These decisions are not easy, but they are made with great care and with the best interest of our students in mind. So what this cut would allow, would have happened, is it would remove... Most buildings have a full math specialist and a fractional FTE of a math specialist. It would remove that fractional FTE in all buildings, so they'd have one math specialist. And our two larger schools, Baker and FRR, would have two math specialists just based on their size.
In the original slide deck, this was presented as a 3.5 FTE, and now it says 3.0. Can you just confirm which is the case?
We erroneously had included a grant-funded position that is actually not a math specialist position on the first slide. The 3.0 number is the correct number. We have...
Okay, but the dollar amount is the same?
The dollar amount is the same.
Yeah, Jesse.
Thank you, Jody. I want to sort of take a look back at what Dr. Schmuckler presented in terms of capacity and how to handle the need. So where do we see what the impact would be? I mean, it's straightforward to say maintain one math specialist in each school, but if I look at Hays at 400 students, and I determine that, I don't know, a quarter of them, 100 students, need help in becoming more numerate, then if we reduce a math, you know, and in the bigger schools, the ratio of 2 to 900 at FRR, for example, would make it nearly impossible, I'm thinking from a capacity decision point, to accommodate the need, which will just either drive outcomes downwards or parents that have the resources to go outside to get the numeracy help that their kids need. So is this really the right direction to go? I mean, based on what the negative side of this could be. And I guess my other question is, this is like, I understand the discussion we had about curriculum coordinators in that they're sort of, they could teach for a portion of it, but really, they're one step, they're like management. And there's an important need. But math specialists are not teaching the teachers necessarily. Like, they're joining, they're twinned with teachers, teaching at the same time. They're pushed in, pushed out, pulled out. So these are truly, like, one of the first cases we've seen of truly student-facing cut proposals, right?
And I would just, yes, you are correct. And I would just like to add that our math specialists are actually really wonderful coaches, too, and they do offer professional development and coaching for teachers as well in addition to everything else they do.
Right, so I guess I'm going to ask a question again. What is the impact in terms of what we know about the percentage of students, quantitatively, the percentage of students in the district in, let's just say, K to 8, that need math support on a daily basis? They may not have IEPs, but they need math, I mean, as we know. So what happens to our capacity, maybe, I don't know, maybe Dr. Guillory can help me here. What happens to our capacity? How much bandwidth do we have to provide math to the students who need it? If we have less math specialists, how do we accommodate the downside if we were to do this?
Well, I mean, you've clearly articulated the real challenge with that. So we began this year with actually looking at kids on the bubble. We did that with each of our principals, and so that notion was, where are your focal points? So this would definitely be a dramatic shift when you look at a 1 to 400 or in the case of a Driscoll of 1 to 525, or Lawrence, 1 to 6... Yep. So it would be a dramatic shift as such.
So I guess dramatic shift is a good turn of speech for it, but it sounds... So I guess dramatic shift is a good turn of speech for it, but it sounds to me like too much, meaning it's one thing to say it would be dramatic, but we're talking about direct math support, math teaching to our students, so I mean.
Dr. Hefter, math scores would go down, and students would be seeking outside resources.
Thank you.
Actually, because it gloms onto what Jody just said, I'm going to cut in line, so.
I was going to say it, Andy.
Well, okay. I haven't talked as much as you today, so. Yeah, I mean, in thinking about this one, I'm always coming back to the sentence that we inserted in our core values. Not too long ago, we said, "We recognize the existence of great disparities in private means among P S B students, and will do everything possible to ensure that private resources do not determine student outcomes." And in voting for that sentence, what I had in mind was Russian math. Nothing against Russian math, but this, you know, these math specialists are sort of what we can do to make sure that those who don't have access to Russian math can still succeed. So this isn't one that I can ever support. Now, Mariah.
Yes, to all of that. And I just want to say that many things in P S B are not measurable, and this is something that we have, it's measurable, and we have great data showing the importance of this additional math support for students. So I'm going to make the motion that we remove this from the list.
Well, Stephen actually beat you to seconding it, but yeah, is there any discussion on this, further discussion? All right, I'll start again at that end.
Just to be clear, a yes vote means we're taking it off the.
Yes, so this is to make it red for good. All right, Carolyn.
Yes.
Helen.
Yes.
Suzanne.
Yes.
Mariah.
Yes.
Stephen.
Yes.
Sarah.
Yes.
Jesse.
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. All right, so that concludes our scheduled business for the night, so let's go back to our public comment. Yes.
I'd like to also move to take the curriculum coordinator cut off the table.
Okay, is there a second for that? Okay, so I guess, to be clear, what would a no vote on this mean? It just means that we're not taking it off the table, but it could still.
It would be like the comm specialist.
No, the comm specialist, that was a cut we voted to accept.
No, it's not.
Yes, we did.
Oh.
Yes, we did.
I thought that vote lost, I'm sorry.
No, 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 she, Mariah moved the number over last week, in the green.
It passed four to two to three, three people abstained, and two people voted against, yeah.
My mistake.
Okay, so a yes vote on this means that we're taking it off the table, meaning that it's red for good and will never come back unless, you know, unless somebody brings it back, and the bar for that is high. A no vote just means that there's no change in the status of this proposal, that we're not accepting or rejecting it at this time. That's my understanding of what a no vote would mean for this motion.
Meaning it's still on the table at that.
Still on the table, yeah.
I personally am going to vote no, just because I'm not ready to vote it yet.
I will do the same.
So, okay, but it's not, it doesn't mean.
But it doesn't mean that we're taking it off, that we're definitely accepting it, or.
Exactly, it's just that I'm not ready to take it off the table.
It's going to stay white for now, on this, so. That's if we vote no, yeah.
Yeah, can we vote it the other way around or something?
Yeah, maybe we just hold this.
I'm happy to withdraw the motion.
Okay, you withdraw.
Be withdrawn.
Let's give some time to.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Okay, so let's move back to our public comment.
I mean, one of the things I'm getting more and more worried about as I do the numbers here, we're at like 4.2, something like that.
4.3.
4.286.
4.3.
Okay, 4.3, rounding up. I just, I'm concerned about how we're going to get further down. And I'm hoping that our administration will help us with this. Maybe we'll get a big grant from somebody to cover a lot of this, but I just want to put that out there, that, you know, we still have a lot of work to do. We did a great deal of work tonight, and it was painful and hard, and it always is painful and hard whenever you have to do this. Just to think about that and to have our staff. I know you've been creative in trying to figure out things, but we still have a ways to go.
Yeah, I mean, we've known since a week ago that the remaining proposals on the table don't actually cover the remaining gap. So we've known that now for a week, and yeah, we're more in that situation after tonight. Stephen.
Is it possible, Dr. Gillery, that your staff can take a look at technology subscriptions and present, it's been a.
Yeah, it's part of.
Of the last item of the next meeting?
Mm-hmm.
I thought it was in the F A Q. I thought we wrote that that one was coming in.
Oh, was it? Okay, well, let's clarify that before, as soon as possible, maybe not.
Well, I just want to make sure I understand then what that docketed item is. I'd be interested in knowing, getting some visibility into what the subscriptions are, what the, more line item visibility into our technology costs.
Yeah, yes.
We had talked about doing stipends, online book subscriptions, online books and subscriptions, and professional and technical services, and the link in E T S as an F A Q. But I think you're right, that actually my notes had, my notes had IT, computer, and software, but I don't think it translated properly over into, it's on the left side of the board when we were marking it up, but it's not on the right side of the board accurately. So I think we do need to place software either with computers or in the F A Q. Okay? So we'll fix that somewhere, somehow, somewhere, yes.
Okay, I guess I maybe filled in the gap in my mind in a way that.
I did, and then we didn't.
Okay, got it, yeah. All right, so let's move back to our public comment. So our next speaker is Daniel Lipton.
Good evening. My name is Daniel Lipton. I'm a second grade teacher at F R R, a parent of children at B H S and Driscoll, and a Brookline resident. And tonight, I come to advocate about the budget in a different way. I'm going to be sharing a poem to the tune of "One Moment in Time" by the incomparable Whitney Houston. Each day I teach, I want to give the best of me to Ruffin Ridley. I'm only one, but not alone. Together with the B E U, support has grown. We're taking a stand and hear us say, we want to do right by the kids each day. Give us the resources and staffing we need to help every student succeed. Then, in the next fiscal year, we will shine, we will shine, we will shine for all of Brookline. We need small class sizes, no grade two F R R section reductions. We need a robust music and drama program with great productions. It shouldn't even be need to be said, but we also need the rich programs of Brookline Adult Ed. We need our social workers and psychologists, too, and we need the custodians and cafeteria crew. We need to add and not subtract, but without math specialists, we won't be able to, and that's a fact. Give us, give us all the schools our children deserve. Help us succeed with rigor and verve. All cuts are bad, please don't make the kids sad. Let's unite with our talent and will, and give Brookline the eight mil. Give us the resources and staffing we need to help every student succeed. Then, in the next fiscal year, we will shine, we will shine, we will shine for all of Brookline. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lipton. All right, our next speaker is David Naught.
Hi there, my name's Dave Naught. I'm a teacher at the high school. Before I start, just solidarity to all the workers that are fighting against layoffs and cuts and all the public comments today, but I wanted to talk about something different. So during the March 3rd School Policy Subcommittee Meeting, school committee member Jesse Hefter proposed a policy requiring that teachers seek explicit school committee approval for hanging any posters, signs, or flags associated with social themes in their classrooms. Mr. Hefter believes that teachers cannot be trusted to choose our own posters, that we cannot be trusted to select messages that are inclusive and appropriate, and that all such messaging should be, to use his word, managed by the school committee. Over what signage and messaging does Mr. Hefter seek to exercise such personal editorial control? What messages are teachers expressing that warrant such scrutiny? I don't think there's much doubt. The two examples he gave of social themes in his presentation were, one, Black Lives Matter, and two, an LGBTQ banner. I'm going to read the transcript of the conversation between Mr. Hefter and fellow school committee member Annie Liu. Mr. Liu said, quote, "If an educator wanted to put up a pride flag in their room, would they then, would they have to do that, go to the school committee for explicit approval?" Mr. Hefter responded after a long pause, "Possibly, yeah, possibly, yeah. I guess my question would be why not?" End quote. I can say why not. Here's why not. When you argue that affirmations of solidarity with queer people should be subjected to political oversight and scrutiny, you are saying that the dignity and rights of queer people are controversial, contestable, and up for debate. That's why not. I'll end with a small anecdote. Eight years ago, when I came in for my job interview at Brookline High School, I went to the main office to sign in, and as I walked in, I saw a small pile of flyers that said Black Lives Matter on them. I don't know if they were student-made or what, but I was thrilled that I could be working at a school which valued racial equality. And I wonder if Mr. Hefter would have approved those flyers. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Naught. Our next speaker is Sid Sravastava.
All right, so thank you so much. My name is. Thank you so much. Actually, would you mind just holding us up? Great, thank you so much. So my name is Sid Sravastava. I'm the proud parent of three children in Brookline. I know we've all focused a lot here about budget cuts, but the point I'm trying to make today is how important it is to look at the actual outcomes and the actual data and quantify the impact of our decisions, so that we can take a step back and point out some big picture issues that are going on. So with that said, what I wanted to do today is to tell a story in four pictures. So what I did is I looked at the data from public sources about our school district in comparison to two neighboring districts, which is Newton and Lexington. So picture number one, if you could point out picture number one. So over the past couple of years, the number of full-time teachers has dropped. Sure, you can show it, please do. The number of full-time teachers has dropped for both Brookline and Newton, but not for Lexington. Picture number two, if one of you wants to point out picture number two. So what about student enrollment? Turns out, it's been minimally changed for these school districts. So now picture number three, if one of you wants to point out picture number three. So here's the kicker. So this shows how much money we're spending per pupil for administration cost. So the red is Brookline over here. This is basically double from 2022 to 2023. That is an enormous increase in administration spending per pupil in Brookline in comparison to Lexington, Newton, and Massachusetts as a state. And so picture number four, the last point I want to make is that this is a graph of M C A S scores. Again, I acknowledge the limitations of M C A S data, but you can see basically here is that precipitous drop even after accounting for the realignment of scores in 2017, 2018, 2019 here. So what I'm wanting, the point I'm trying to make is that, what do we need to do about it? I think we need to preserve these student-facing roles, whether that's teachers, or whether that's smaller classroom sizes, or direct services, or tutoring. And then speaking of tutoring, we've heard about the Calculus Project, and I think tutoring is such a key way of optimizing each and every individual's long-term learning potential. It provides the scaffolding for success in higher coursework. The Calculus Project works, and I encourage all of you who haven't read about Dr. Adrian Mims to read his thesis, that's truly inspirational work. It's titled, "Improving African-American Achievement in Geometry Honors and Truly Inspirational Motivation for the Calculus Project." And I think these type of bottom-up approaches that push each individual to maximize their potential are truly effective, and they service individuals of all learning capacities and abilities. And then, why stop at the Calculus Project? Why not an advanced literature project? Why not an applied chemistry project? Why not all sorts of these advanced learning opportunities? And why start in high school? Why not in middle school? Why not in elementary school? I think we need to refocus on the things that are truly helpful in terms of improving outcomes in education in Brookline. Thank you.
Sid, can you send us a PDF of your poster?
Oh, sure, with pleasure.
Thank you. Yes, please.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Sravastava. Our next speaker is Maggie Caniff.
Hi, everybody. My name's Maggie Caniff. I teach Lincoln at the Lincoln, teach kindergarten at the Lincoln School. Sorry, it's late and it's a school night. I'm usually a bit, and bad asleep by now. And I also have a son who goes to Hays School, and he's in the fifth grade there. So what I'd like to say tonight is that you've had, you've had a chance to hear from many educators and community members already, and I'm sure you'll hear from more. And we're letting you know how each of the proposed cuts will affect our schools and our students. I've heard some speakers urge you to avoid cutting, quote, "student-facing positions." And I do appreciate the sentiment, but respectfully, there are no cuts being proposed that will not affect students. You heard Greg Porter speak very eloquently tonight on behalf of the curriculum coordinators, and I want to tell you, I'm a kindergarten teacher, and I couldn't do my job without my curriculum coordinators. I don't know how I could. And just so that you know, they don't just, they don't just help teachers, regular ed teachers. I happened to walk by a learning center the other day, and Greg was in there, you know, head-to-head with a learning center teacher, figuring out how best to accommodate the curriculum that we have for her students. And that's just one example, but all of our curriculum coordinators are integral. I don't know how we can possibly roll out a new literacy curriculum next year without a literacy coordinator. I'm glad that you voted tonight to keep our math specialists. We've already had cuts to our math specialists, and we had all of our literacy coaches cut, and that has really had some dire effects already. So more math cuts would be disastrous. With the national war on equity and inclusion right now, when those very words are being criminalized, and our Secretary of Education doesn't even know what the acronym IDEA stands for, it is incredibly disheartening and almost unbelievable that we would consider cuts to special education and the dismantling of our Office of Educational Equity. Once you've discussed all of these proposals and done your due diligence, which I understand is a monumental task, and I do appreciate that, I hope at the end of the day, you will have a greater understanding and realization about what those of us in the schools have known and felt for years. We are already stretched to our limits, and if any of these cuts are allowed, our students will suffer. It is not hyperbole to say that this is a dire emergency, and that any multimillion-dollar cuts will totally. and that any multimillion-dollar cuts will totally decimate our schools. In conclusion, I'm urging you to partner with the hundreds of Brookline Public Schools educators, staff, and community members who are standing up and saying, "No cuts", and tell the Select Board to release the funds in totality. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Caniff. Our next speaker is Amanda Plaza.
Hi, everyone. My name is Amanda Plaza, and I am a school psychologist at Baker. I am here today to respectfully urge you to reject the proposal to cut school psychologists, guidance counselors, and adjustment counselors from our schools. As we face ongoing challenges in student well-being and mental health, these positions are more crucial than ever in supporting the academic and social-emotional development of our students. The proposed cut would have a detrimental impact on both the students and the broader Brookline school community. Schools psychologists play a vital role in the early identification and intervention of students with learning disabilities, emotional challenges, and other developmental concerns. These are services we are uniquely qualified to provide as we are the only professionals trained in the specialized tools we use to assess students. The loss of even one school psychologist could have a ripple effect throughout the entire district. Our caseloads would increase, reducing both the quality of services we can offer and the number of students we are able to support. If we are unable to provide students with their legally mandated services due to staffing issues, we risk being cited by the Department of Education for noncompliance. This would likely result in the need to hire additional contracted staff who do not know our students and would lead to even higher costs. So far this year, 656 evaluations have been conducted across the district. Our district-wide school psychologist will typically complete 50 to 75 evaluations on her own each year, many of which are out of district and involve additional travel time, sometimes out of state, as we heard her say. A typical evaluation takes eight to 12 hours to complete, while they can take much longer depending on the complexities of the student's profile, often requiring report writing outside of regular work hours. Like it was just said, we are already stretched thin. If the district-wide position is eliminated, building-based school psychologists would be responsible for completing the out-of-district evaluations, which is simply not feasible alongside our other duties. Together with the school adjustment counselor at Baker, we currently see 36 students weekly for mandated IEP counseling, potentially doubling school psychologist caseload and workload while already dedicating all of our time to thorough psychological evaluations, mandated counseling, consultations, crisis response, risk assessments, IEP meetings, and so many other responsibilities that are truly impossible to conceptualize in three minutes, which severely limit our ability to support students effectively. Most neighboring districts, such as Cambridge and Newton, fully staff each school with school psychologists, social workers, or guidance counselors, and some even have additional SEL coaches and interventionists. I ask you to prioritize the well-being and future success of our students by rejecting the proposal to cut the school psychologist position and all other clinical staff. These services are vital to maintaining the safe, supportive, and effective school community, and removing them would be a disservice to the children we claim we are here to support. Overall, the number and the breadth of cuts that are on the table are a crisis for the schools and will have profoundly negative impact on our educators, students, and schools. I and the BEU are calling on town leaders to use certified free cash to meet this emergency with a one-time move of money into the school budget. We say no to all cuts. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Plaza. Next up, we have Paul Epstein.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm Paul Epstein. I'm a longtime social worker at Brookline High School. I'll keep my remarks brief. Even though my own social work department at Brookline High School is facing a 20% reduction in staff, I'm actually here to talk to you about another equally short-sighted and painful potential cut. I'm here to talk about our beloved custodial staff and to emphasize just how big a blow it would be to each school's culture if we did indeed privatize and contract out these roles. Three minutes is not enough time to list and describe the countless times and instances when a school custodian has helped this social worker help a student in need. Three hours probably wouldn't suffice. I can think of times, whether it was finding a basement space to safely store a recently evicted family's possessions, or busting out a grinder to unlock a kid's bike when he lost his key and had no way to get home. Jimmy Mellett and his staff at BHS have always gone above and beyond to take care of our staff and students' needs. Need 10 extra tables the night of a charity event? Call Jimmy. Need access to the building after hours because a kid left his backpack in your office and is freaking out about homework? Call Jimmy. I'm one person, but I doubt I could name a single one of my hundreds of colleagues who doesn't require custodial help at least once every few weeks. Think about all of those tasks, large and small, that they graciously take care of on top of all of their other regular duties. And they always do it with a smile and make time for a moment of connection and collegiality. Anyone who would put forward or support this proposed budget cut can't possibly understand the value add to a school that a top-notch custodial staff brings to the table. You simply won't find a cleaner or better-cared-for physical plant in any comparable district anywhere. This is not the way to balance our budget. Custodians are known for cleaning up messes not of their own making, but this situation is one mess that they shouldn't be involved in cleaning. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Epstein. Next up, we have Julie Boss. I understood that Tara Washburn and Julie had switched places, but both of them, I guess, left the room. Here's Tara.
Hello, it's the last-minute change. I am Tara Washburn. I am a math specialist at Pierce School. I want to thank you for your time. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, and thank you especially for considering the work that math specialists do on behalf of Brookline students and teachers. We are very grateful to maintain the FTEs that we have currently. So I'm just going to use a moment to say that it really hurts to hear the Office of Educational Equity being cut. It hurts hard. This isn't who we are in Brookline. It does not make me proud as a resident of Brookline and a teacher in Brookline for many years. So I urge you to reconsider the cuts that you've approved to this Office of Educational Equity, and I urge you to go back to the town to fully fund our schools. We need this money. I know your job is incredibly hard, and these cuts are hard, but we also believe Brookline has the money. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Washburn. Our next speaker is Ashley Hayes.
Hello. Good evening, everyone, members of the school committee, parents, and colleagues. My name is Ashley Hayes, and I have been teaching kindergarten at Runkel for the last 12 years, and I'm speaking tonight to express my deep concern about the school committee's recent decision to eliminate the Office of Educational Equity. As an educator of our youngest educator, or our younger students, I see firsthand how essential it is to create an inclusive and welcoming environment for every child who walks through our doors. The Office of Educational Equity has played a crucial role in helping us make that vision a reality, from professional development that addresses biases to curriculum, to support, to curriculum that supports ensuring that there is diverse representation. Their work directly impacts how we teach and how our students feel seen and valued. One of the most important initiatives from this office is the Brookline Educators for Educational Diversity, BEED, whose mission is to recruit onboard and retain educators from diverse racial and ethnic backgrounds. Research consistently shows that having, that students benefit from having teachers who look like them, teachers who understand their experiences and can serve, and can serve as mentors and role models. Yet, many students go through their entire academic careers without ever having even one teacher who shares their racial and/or cultural background. At the very least, every student deserves that opportunity just once. BEED makes that possible by intentionally creating pathways to recruit and support diverse educators, helping to bridge that gap and provide students with the representation they need and deserve. The elimination of the Office of Educational Equity means we will lose crucial infrastructure that makes programs like BEED possible. It sends a message to students and families, especially those from historically marginalized communities, that their experiences and needs are no longer prioritized. Our staff will lose vital resources that help us create safe and nurturing environments where every child can thrive. In a district that prides itself on diversity and inclusion, dismantling this office is a step backwards, undermining progress that took years to build. We must restore the Office of Educational Equity to ensure our students continue to receive the education they deserve, one that reflects fairness, inclusion, and respect. We have found over that, over the last several years, that Brookline's spending on schools as a percentage of its overall budget has declined and is now lower than many of its community peers. The number and breadth of cuts on the table is a crisis for our schools and will have profoundly negative impact on our educators, students, and schools. We are calling on town leaders to use certified free cash to meet this emergency with a one-time move of money into the school budget. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Hayes. Our next speaker is Jamie Rondo.
Good evening. My name is Jamie Rondo, and I am a three-to-five learning center teacher at Hays. I recognize the difficult decisions you're facing, and I truly appreciate how serious you're taking your role. However, I'm here today to make one thing clear. All cuts are bad cuts, but cutting learning center teachers will only make this crisis worse. I'm a Survivor fan. In the next couple of months, you're going to be at one big final tribal council. So I'm making my case. Outwit, outplay, outlast. Special ed is how our schools survive. Outwit. Learning center teachers serve as the strategic backbone of our school. During my busiest school year, I navigated a caseload of eight students. That seems like a really small load, but my strategy stretched across five classrooms while supervising three paraprofessionals across two programs. I was essentially running life skills and grade-level instruction, while I shifted from teaching students how to type a phone number to then guiding some students doing 29 times 36. If my caseload were to increase to 12 students, we would have been out of compliance, risking students missing essential services and exposing the district to potential legal consequences from justified families. If Survivor, if in Survivor, bad strategy gets you voted out. In education, it fails our students. And just like in any strategic game, eliminating key players, our learning center teachers doesn't just weaken the tribe, it's a losing move. Outplay. Sped teachers are the essential glue that binds general ed with various service providers, including occupational therapists, speech-language pathologists, counselors, and administrators. Moreover, we bridge the vital connection between schools and families. Currently, many families are dissatisfied due to the turmoil within our district. Just like in Survivor, a messy alliance leads to being voted off the island. And it leads to the frustrated parents who feel their concerns are not being addressed. Families will vote us off their child's island. Outlast. The demands on special ed teachers are unsustainable, but we continue to show up because our students need us. Cutting learning center teachers won't solve the budget crisis, it will make it worse. The district's financial strain is driven by out-of-district placements. Cutting sped teachers will destroy the education that our most vulnerable students need and deserve. If we have one fewer special ed teacher, my caseload in my building would have gone to 12 students, and there's no way to provide that level of support. Just like my proposed caseload, cutting learning center teachers will easily make our eight-million crisis grow to 12. Survivor teaches us as to when we must adapt, think ahead, and make the right alliances. Special ed is how schools outwit, outplay, and outlast the challenges we face. Don't vote special ed off the island, because with us, without us, the whole tribe falls apart. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rondo. Our next speaker is Katie McGraw.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for letting me speak. I want to thank you all so very much for your commitment to this process, for how difficult it is, and for really asking such thoughtful questions. I'm speaking today as a child of Brookline. I've been invested in the public schools of Brookline for the last 50 years, and I thank you all deeply for your commitment to taking on this leadership role in our schools. I must say that personally, I am exhausted, as you must be, at trying to continually fight to keep up the quality, value, and respect of the Brookline schools that I grew up in and that I've been honored to teach in. I truly believe that we are at a tipping point in supporting the schools in Brookline. We have disturbing trends that need to be addressed head-on and not just passed along until the next time they become a crisis. This horrific budget gap is one of many we've experienced throughout the years. As a mentor facilitator tasked with meeting all the new teachers in my building, I continually have to explain to the bright, competent, and eager new teachers that we have, that we've been able to hire, which is hard, that they should expect to get pink-sliped because of the uncertainty of cutting teaching positions. Keep in mind, they believe that there is very little chance of cutting classroom positions or special ed positions. Those are essential student-facing jobs. However, I then have to explain that any positions that are cut cause teachers in those positions to be given other opportunities within the district, thereby bumping out the last teachers to be hired. This kind of uncertainty does not help us to retain the talented and loyal teachers that we hire, who would want to stay on with the possibility of losing one's job year after year. The need for an override and the lack of accurate estimations of the financial needs to be covered by those overrides has arisen too many times for most taxpayers to understand. We cannot continue to skimp and cut and ask for more money to support one of the most important resources in the town of Brookline. We must work together to make a plan to reliably and adequately fund the school system we want, the school system that makes us the community we want to be, the school system that taxpayers will want to send their children to instead of choosing private options due to the uncertainty and underfunding of the public option. I encourage you all to stand your ground, to advocate for the schools you want, and to continue to ask the important questions about how Brookline is prioritizing its financial allocations. And you have been doing just that. I really, really appreciate that. Ask them what the difference in interest rates will be between a triple-A bond rating and a double-A bond rating. Is that little difference worth the cost of losing our reputation as a town with excellent schools? Is the uncertainty caused by going through this deficit process of proposed cuts and pitting one program against another worth the damage it causes to the trust of the residents of Brookline and all of its employees? We, the educators of Brookline, are with you in this advocacy and are ready and willing to collaborate. Please stand strong and ask for the money we need. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McGraw. And our last speaker of the night is Julie Boss.
Good evening. Thank you, members of the school community, for this opportunity to speak. Everyone who's still here in the Brookline community. Appreciate you all and your work. Well, I'm the last speaker, and I'm following Katie McGraw, and that was awesome, Katie. I feel like all I really want to say is ditto. Yeah, and Maggie, thank you. I'm also saying ditto to what Maggie said. I'm going to be a little bit inarticulate here because I'm not speaking on what I thought I was going to be speaking on. So my name is Julie Boss, if I didn't already say that. I'm a math specialist at the Florida Ruffin Ridley School. I have been hesitant up to now to talk about individual proposed cuts because I also believe that no cuts are okay cuts. The budget proposed by the superintendent doesn't contain any fluff. It's a budget that accurately reflects the cost of providing the education that the public schools of Brookline is known for, that past students have received, and that current and future students deserve. We can't be on a continuous seesaw moving things around to fit the current crisis every year. We need stable funding and consistent programming. We need fully-funded schools. We have done the research in the BEU, and we believe that the town has the ability to fix this with a one-time movement of money from the certified cash funds. And if I'm using the wrong language there, I apologize. But we believe there's the ability, and now we need the will. And we urge you to go back to the town to ask them to fully fund our schools. And we urge you to go back to the town to ask them to fully fund our schools. The other thing that I wanted to, so I was here, I also, yes, I was here to speak to math specialists. I want to really, just from the bottom of my heart, from speaking for all the students that I serve, all my wonderful colleagues, thank you for recognizing that value. And I also want to say, I know that the things that you're cutting, it's not that you think that they're not valuable, and I understand that this is a really hard position that you're put in. I do feel like I need to say, though, that I, it, it also breaks my heart that the Office of Educational Equity was determined to be one of the cuts that you were keeping. I think that's a huge mistake. I think it presents, it sends a message to our, our, all of our staff, everybody who works in Brookline, all of our students, that there are some people who belong and some who don't, and that it's lip service to say what you say in your mission statement, what we say in our mission statement, because we're not really going to back it up. That's about as much as I think that I can ad lib about that. But thank you for everything that you do. I know this is really difficult, and we got more asks.
Thank you very much, Ms. Boss. And that concludes our public comment for tonight. Is there any new business? I don't see any, so we're adjourned. Thank you, everyone who came to speak with us. Thanks to those who presented. Thanks to those who stayed till the end. We'll see you next week.